I'd like to call to order this session of the Fullerton City Council Closed Session on February 2nd of 2021.
Great, now this computer should be able to do.
There are a number of instructions to those who are following the meetings at home. Those are contained in the agenda for those who would look it up on the city website. With that, Madam Clerk, would you read the roll?
Mayor Whitaker.
Here.
Mayor Potem Dunlap.
Here.
Councilmember Jung.
Here.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
Councilmember Zara.
Here.
And I would inquire as to public comments?
Yeah, no public comments.
Okay, no public comments and with that, we can recess to closed session. Call to order this session of the City of Fullerton City Council Successor Agency. This is the regular meeting, the public meeting, for February 2nd, 2021. And there are a couple elements tonight that I just want to convey to anyone who's tuning into this meeting. The public may make an oral comment via computer, smart device, or telephone. Attendee names and/or phone numbers will display during the meeting. For those wishing to speak via telephone, you can call 1-669-900-9128 and enter Zoom meeting ID 96612221911, then press the pound sign. When prompted to enter a participation ID number, press the pound sign again. We do encourage comments and appreciate those at home who are wanting to watch the proceedings of the council meeting this evening. So our city clerk will work to accommodate your request to speak. And with that, Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Mayor Whitaker.
Here.
Mayor Potem Dunlap.
Here.
Councilmember Jung.
Here.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
Councilmember Zara.
Here.
Great, thank you. We are fortunate to have Pastor Israel Gomez this evening from Branches Fullerton Church and who he has gladly provided to, gladly agreed to provide us the invocation. Welcome, sir. Please.
Greetings, I thank you for the welcome. I'm happy to just be here on behalf of Branches Fullerton and pray for you and the city that we love.
Great.
Gracious Father, we thank you for your graces and your mercies. All you are the Almighty One, who are good. In your creation, when you created it, you looked upon it and called it good. For we are in great need, all of humanity is in great need because of sin. But also, even tonight, I pray that you bring peace upon all those here laboring on behalf of the city, thinking, wrestling, making decisions, making presentations. I pray for your grace, I pray for your perseverance for their labor, and I pray for your help as they seek to do.
A good work to even make available to the citizens of Fullerton to be able to participate in all the work and labor. The Father, we look to you, we give thanks to you, and we pray these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. I've asked Councilmember Zara to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Attorney, do we have a closed session report this evening?
There's no closed session report this evening, however, we do not conclude all of our agendas, so we'll be turning back into closed session following the regular meeting.
Great, thank you. I want to ask the council members to declare any ex parte communications. Are there any to report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I had conversations with the Fullerton Firefighters Association's president, Dan Lancaster.
I was also contacted by Mr. Lancaster.
As was I, Mr. Mayor.
As was I, Mr. Mayor.
And I make the full set here as well. Dan Lancaster spoke with me a lot about the equipment, the department equipment, their CIP, and some future direction for the, for the agency. And with that, we have a presentation, proclamation for Career Technical Education Month. And I would like to acknowledge the North Orange County Regional Occupation Program, the ROP, with a proclamation this evening. Jennifer Reddick, Instructional Programs Administrative Assistant, will be picking this up later. She's not here this evening, but I just wanted to call attention to the proclamation on behalf of the council declaring the month of February 2021 as Career and Technical Education Month. The important part of the proclamation reads this, "Whereas the month of February has been designated Career Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education and the State of California, and whereas profound economic and technological changes in our society are rapidly reflected in the structure and nature of work, thereby placing new and additional responsibilities on our educational system. And whereas career and technical education opportunities at North Orange County Regional Occupation Program provide the citizens of Fullerton with a school-to-careers connection and is the backbone of a strong, well-educated workforce, which fosters productivity in business and industry and contributes to our city's leadership in the marketplace. And whereas North Orange County Regional Occupation Program's career and technical education gives high school students in our city experience and practical, meaningful applications of basic skills such as reading, writing, and mathematics, thus improving the quality of their education and giving all students leadership opportunities in their fields and in their communities. And whereas career and technical education offers individuals lifelong opportunities to learn new skills which provide them with career choices and potential satisfaction. And whereas the ever-increasing cooperative efforts of career and technical educators with business and industry stimulate the growth and vitality of our city's economy and that of the entire nation by preparing graduates for career fields forecast to experience the largest and fastest growth over the next decade. Now therefore be it resolved that I Bruce Whitaker, Mayor of the City of Fullerton, and behalf of the entire Fullerton City Council to hereby proclaim February 2021 as Career and Technical Education Month in the City of Fullerton and urge all citizens to become familiar with the services and benefits offered by North Orange County Regional Occupational Program and other career and technical education programs in our city and surrounding communities, and to support and participate in these programs to enhance their individual work skills and productivity. Signed on February 2nd of 2021." So that ends our presentations this evening and would lead us, Madam Clerk, to public comments. Now, we've had a little bit of technical difficulties here this evening, and that's partly the reason for the late start of this session of the council. But I, where do we stand right now with the public comments at this stage?
There are 65 public comments in ecomments and probably several on Zoom. We'll get the exact count for you when staff is back in the room.
Okay, now, ecomments, what's the proposal to handle those this evening?
They look like they are on a variety of topics. Given the number, I can summarize them for you if you like.
I think it might be necessary without objection from any of the council members.
I would prefer if we read them, and if there are any form letters, then we can summarize those.
I would agree with the councilman on that.
Okay, well, I'd really prefer unanimous support one way or another, so, Madam Clerk, I don't know how long this might take, but I guess to read them in the entirety is the decision.
I will go as quickly as possible. First one is a guest user, has a taxpayer, why am I paying for people working from home in the library not open? Anaheim and Placentia and Buena Park are open, please, City Council, take care of this, thanks. Guest user, I am deeply concerned that we have a sitting council member, Ahmad Zara, who refuses to publicly acknowledge pending criminal charges against him. Why won't he say anything to clear his name? He needs to address this controversy immediately until his criminal proceedings have been properly adjudicated. There is no reason to assume he remains fit for public service. He should consider resigning for his own good and for the good of the city. HJ Pac, Mr. Whitaker, you do not represent the public. A number of people spoke in support of Mr. Zara. They all had nothing but good things to say. Why do you hate Fullerton so much? Guest user, the mayor and Mayor Potem are turning our city into an absolute joke. English is my first language. Mayor Potem Dunlap, what part of destroying our city falls under public safety? You should be ashamed of yourself. Guntherston M., I have an idea about as good as any idea Mr. Mayor has come up with. How about we slash the FPD budget and make Chief Dunn transport himself in a wheelbarrow? That will save money in the budget on top of less wear and tear on our roads. What do you say, Mr. Mayor? Problem solved. Guest user, what did Ahmad Zara's five fingers say to a woman of color's face? Slap. Guest user, no more graffiti, no more vandalism, no more battering women, no more Zara. Guest user, I fear for my daughter now and around Fullerton City Hall ever since you let Ahmad Zara hurt women with no punishment. Shame on you. Guest user is Harvey Weinstein, our city manager. It's the only reason I can come up with for why the Boys Club of City Council and City Hall is covering for one of their own when such a serious crime of battering a woman of color is concerned. Please stop covering up for Councilmember Zara and being such bad examples to our daughters by showing them it's okay to batter women as long as you have power. Guest user, Mr. Ahmad worked hard to start a department that Fullerton never even had. If we did, Mayor Whitaker would have slashed it from the inception. Simply cutting and saying no does not make you productive, Mayor Whitaker. I've watched the last 20, I've watched for the last 23 years that I've lived here, and you are a travesty. And Mr. Ahmad's actions are as if he's the only one that cares about bettering Fullerton. We need progress, not regress. While you are regressing, you should regress back to your childhood and go back to school. Guest user, can you believe it? We didn't even have an Economic Development Department until Councilmember Zara. How embarrassing. On top of that, Mayor Whitaker continues to ruin Fullerton. Mayor Potem Dunlap looks like he's continuing Mayor Whitaker's destruction. There's nothing left to cut. Regonomics is a failure like Mayor Whitaker. Mayor Whitaker, Mayor Potem Dunlap, and Councilmember Jung need to have a meeting with Councilmember Zara, but not speak and listen for once. Gretchen M., I live in District 2, but I wish I lived in District 5. Mr. Ahmad is so diligent and makes sure he updates his constituents, but I'm in District 2 and only get science unless I tune into Mr. Ahmad's meetings. Where are my district representatives? How come they don't update us like Mr. Ahmad does? He is the epitome of progress. Why you only represent laziness and apathy? Guest user, I'm not always able to watch the council meetings online live. However, I watch when I get around to it. Please stop lying, Mayor Whitaker and Mayor Potem Dunlap. It's a really bad look when I have to tell my kids not to be like you. Guest user, I have great news. Mayor Potem Dunlap, I found a used vehicle on Craigslist for the Fullerton Fire Department. The bad news is it's a minivan, and we need a ladder. Guest user, Whitaker and Dunlap, no one is saying defund the fire department. Why do you keep defunding the fire department? Please stop. Better yet, please leave. Chris Huser, I want to publicly thank Hugo Corial for all his efforts in implementing the restoration process for Hillcrest Park with the Pine Forest Stairs, the Historic Fountain, and Great Lawn, the Serenity of the Duck Pond, all while protecting the historic stonework throughout the park. Hillcrest is once again a jewel, a place for everyone to hike, play, exercise, and to enjoy, all this done under the dictatorship of Hugo, directorship, excuse me, of Hugo Corial. There are still no improvements to be made, but for now, thanks Hugo. Guest user, Mayor Potem Dunlap, how does denying the fire department necessary equipment constitute public safety? Manny Feek, Mayor Whitaker needs to resign. His pettiness is on record for all future generations. How embarrassing. You must resign. My kids watched you lie through your teeth. Aren't you ashamed of yourself? You are more than five times their age and still lie. Maria Garcia Feek, and I've lived in Fullerton 14 years. Bruce never came back and reported news from the water board. I can't always make them, but Ahmad does every month. Ahmad has helped disadvantaged communities and ensured inclusion with translations into other languages. This affects us firsthand. What have you done, Bruce? My name is Quan Solo Montenegro Garcia Feek. My mommy and daddy fight a lot now. They said we may have to move now because the mayor is being a teddy. I don't want to move. All of my friends are here. Flaviano Montenegro Garcia Feek, I have lived in Fullerton for 14 years. Mayor Whitaker is a liar. My parents made me watch the other man gave you a whole month. I feel like you lied to my sisters. That's not okay. Constantino Garcia Feek, 14-year resident. Mayor Whitaker, do you plan to fix our roads with duct tape? Duct tape is cheap, but it still costs money. Catalona Garcia Feek, 14-year Fullerton resident. Not all politicians are liars, only some like Mayor Whitaker, who is technologically literate and doesn't understand how video feeds and archiving works. Way to be a role model. What a disgrace. Madeline S., Whitaker and Dunlap are awful liars. Whitaker, Zara gave you a month. Dunlap voting against the fire department is not promoting public safety. If you don't understand this, you need to go back to school. I'm ashamed that you're running the city my kids are in. Shawn Michael F., I used to want to be a firefighter for FFD, but now I see that Mayor Whitaker and Mayor Potem Dunlap are destroying an apartment. Are we even going to have a fire department in two years? Sorry, waiting for the next screen to load. Here we go. Fidelio G., Mayor Potem Dunlap, fire engines are different from fire ladders. You need both. I thought when you were running, you promised to ensure public safety. Now I don't trust my kids around you. Menriquez P., why are all the new dais members and the mayor's liars? Mayor Potem Dunlap, you promised to increase public safety, but you voted against the fire ladder for FFD. This is not providing public safety. Explain yourself. Tom and Celia T., Mayor Potem Dunlap, I voted for you because you promised to support public safety. I have three little kids. Mayor Whitaker already is stretching our FD thin. Now you're going to deny them proper equipment? Are you going to make them put out fires with an eyedropper? M. Chachi, Dunlap and Whitaker, I'm trying to teach my kids that lying is not a good thing. However, you two are making it terribly difficult when they see you lying. How am I supposed to convince them that it's not an admirable quality? Donovan P., Zara and Silva are like the Lightning and Makeup Crew. They make Dunlap, Whitaker, and Jung look good while they perform their political theater. We are tired of your lies. Zara and Silva, stop making them look and covering up their acne. You three act like pimple-faced teenagers. You should be ashamed of yourselves. Jared Cohen, our poor road conditions are well-known, and I understand we don't have the money to fix things, but why are we actively making things worse? Big Ben Construction has been working on Commonwealth between Lemon and Raymond for the past month, digging huge trenches and repaving the road in much worse condition than it was. It appears we're paying them to make the road worse. I only hope they aren't paid until the city finds the roads to be in similar condition as before their work. Guest user, Bruce, you need a hug. Chris C., Whitaker needs a resign. The city cannot handle former years of destruction. At best, you do nothing. At worst, Fullerton will become absorbed by neighboring cities. Whitaker, you began the process before you came mayor. You voted to give our fire department to Placentia. You are not, you are unfit to be mayor. Todd M., Mayor Whitaker, you haven't held one single meeting to inform your constituents. Maybe it's because you've accomplished nothing and there are no updates. Meanwhile, Mr. Ahmad continues his monthly meetings virtually. Why do you keep hiding? C. Bronwyn M., Whitaker, your solution to fixing our roads is to have other cities pay for it. When Fullerton gets broken up into parcels and sold and becomes an unincorporated land because we're bankrupt. Never mind acting hastily. You don't like to act, period. You've been napping the last 10 years. Kadima Fatnick, Mayor Whitaker, with all the money you save by bankrupting our city so it can be given to neighboring cities, do you have more money now to buy your suits from somewhere, other where than men's warehouse? Guest user, Mayor Whitaker, what have you done for public safety? You voted against our police department and fire department. You have only served as a voice of dissent while accomplishing nothing. How do you plan on further destroying our city? Please leave. Guest user, Mayor Whitaker, after you die, we will still have to live here. Why do you keep making it difficult for us to live here? Guest user, Jung, I say with great sadness that you bring shame upon the Asian-American community. Sarah J., there were roomfuls of participants for Mr. Ahmad's water meetings. You have never even held meetings. Why did you take Mr. Ahmad's seat to do nothing? Mayor Whitaker, did you steal Ahmad's seat on the water board because you wanted the pension? But according to you, pensions are a problem. Why do you fight for yours? Ione Gosma, my rage is not toxic. Your inaction on politicking is. After you die, what are you leaving our kids? Mayor Whitaker, you're a terrible role model, and you are toxic. Guest user, what a tragedy for the water board. The OCWD Director, Councilman, Mayor's Congressman, et cetera of other cities spoke out in support of Mr. Zara, who supports you, Mr. Whitaker. CK, Mr. Josh Ferguson, please stop wasting time with your frivolous lawsuit against the city and stop your grandstanding. You sound like a QAnon supporter. Just stop. Guest user, Jung, you need to resign. KJ Min, Councilman Jung, I met with my Bible study, and we are concerned about your decisions and judgment. We are praying for you. We cast out the demon in the name of Jesus. Guest user, the unfortunate thing about council sessions is they are recorded and the videos archived forever on the city website. Mayor Whitaker, please be aware that you are on record lying. You are a horrible role model and should be ashamed of yourself. Councilmember Silva, please tell your students that not all politicians are disgusting liars. Mayor Whitaker, please go inside and use your toilet. Stop defecating on Fullerton. You need to leave. Guest user, I would like to make a motion to postpone the hearing on cannabis dispensary location until 2024. Is that enough time for Mayor Whitaker to destroy Fullerton? Beatrice Whiting, Mayor Whitaker, you asked for comments to be in the form of questions of what we'd like to do. As you wish. Why won't you fix our roads? How much longer will you waste your time and just take up physical space? Will you stop slashing the budget like you are at a garage sale? And loading the last screen. Manuel Facied, Mr. Zara is not reactive. He listens and acts appropriately. Mr. Whitaker, you say you don't like to act quickly and be reactive. I say you don't like to act at all. Mr. Whitaker, you just play cartoons in your head while pretending to listen. If you want to be a sloth, go take your dunce hat and stand in the corner. Guest user, doesn't Whitaker have a pension? Why do you keep cutting everybody else's? Meanwhile, you do nothing but vote no. Guest user, why do you keep delaying the legal dispensaries? There are a number of illegal dispensaries that are not paying taxes. I'm not saying that taxes from cannabis are the answer. Mayor Whitaker has the answer. You claim to have the answer, but you have never revealed it. This is your last term. What is the answer? Guest user, why do you keep protesting the dispensaries? Because of your ignorance, illegal dispensaries are continuing to operate. Why are you joining the mayor to destroy the city? Guest user, we never had anyone working for economic development until Councilmember Zara created it. Are you going to cut that position too, Mayor Whitaker? Guest user, Whitaker, you're about as effective as mayor as T. is a stable genius of a president, which means you are not effective and need to remove yourself. Guest user, I want to thank Mayor Whitaker. Because of you, my nine and seven-year-olds have had to grow up more quickly. I had to figure out how to explain to them that was meant when someone was being petty and small. Thank you for keeping me on my toes. Guest user, Whitaker needs to resign. The city cannot handle four years more of destruction. At best, you do nothing. At worst, Fullerton will become absorbed by neighboring cities. Guest user, longtime resident, you cannot argue that Mayor Whitaker is on changing. He's always spewed lies and has a knee-jerk reaction when confronted with his worthlessness. Hear, hear. This man is steadfast. You got to give him a hand. Guest user, I watched Whitaker. You are wrong. Zara gave you a month. It's on record, and don't be a liar and petty or not transparent. However your motives are, you an embarrassment. You should be ashamed of yourself. How old are you, and you are lying through your teeth? Guest user, Mayor Potem Dunlap, you said that fixing the roads was your top priority and that you're looking into all possible funding. I suggest you talk to Mayor Whitaker. For years, he has said he's had the answer, not possibilities, the solution. Never mind. I'll ask him myself. Mayor Whitaker, now that this is your last eligible term, there's no point in being so coy. Let us have the answer. Mayor Potem is curious. Help him out. Why do you insist on making everything you touch more difficult? Jesse Omak, Mr. Ahmad, how dare you talk about transparency and not declare that you received money from the police union? I know for a fact that you received $100 gift card, two Food for Less that you gave to me and my family. We have been struggling during these times, but you helped us so much. Thank you. My family is lucky to have a council member actually cares. My family, thank you so much, Mr. Ahmad. Bruce Colcarra, I don't believe Councilman Jung has children. How can a parent destroy the city where their child is being raised? Jung, you need to resign. Jay Min Cho, Mr. Josh Ferguson, Mayor Whitaker, please remember that the city council meetings are recorded and archived forever. When you lie, ignorantly spread half's truths, you are preserving yourself as a moron forever. Please think before you open your mouth. Bruce Galwood, Mr. Ferguson, please do your homework. Simply ignorantly skimming the headlines of your conspiracy rags does not make you well-informed. Stop making ignorant accusations and spreading stupid lies like your mayor. And the last one, guest user, what is going on with the cannabis dispensary crackdown? There are a number of illegal dispensaries in operation because you keep wasting time and can't decide on the locations of the legal dispensaries. Meanwhile, you let the moms ignorantly run their mouths and spew nonsense while indirectly supporting the illegal dispensaries. That's just more tax dollars that could be going towards the programs Whitaker cut. And I think we're ready for Zoom comments. Yes, we have eight hands raised on Zoom. I'm going to start with Laura Garcia. You will have three minutes to speak. Oh, my goodness. Not sure what is happening with the screen there. There we go. Laura Garcia, you should be able to speak. Please unmute.
Unmute. Okay, good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Laura Garcia. I am a resident of downtown Los Angeles and the Vice President of ASPI Local 1902. We represent about 80% of water workers at the Metropolitan Water District in addition to eight other water districts in Southern California. I am here to speak on item two under appointments. I am requesting that you reaffirm the current appointee, Adan Ortega, as a Director to the Metropolitan Water District.
Pardon me, but that item is an agendized item this evening, and your comments would be better placed when we arrive at that agenda item.
So should I wait on the line?
Well, yes, you know, we don't, in public comments, we're willing to listen to any commentary that is not already represented by, by an item on the agenda. So the appropriate place would be to wait until that item comes up in this meeting.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you for, for that. Next commenter, please.
Jensen Halstrom.
Good evening, City Council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Jensen Halstrom. I would like to start off firstly by just expressing my condolences for all of those very harsh comments, Mayor Whitaker and Potem Dunlap, and also Fred Jung and the rest of the council. Very, very hostile comments there. I would like to inform you all that last week, the historic orchard at the former Kimberly Clark site was razed, leaving over 500 mature avocado, citrus, persimmon, and pecan trees uprooted. The community is unnerved by this abrupt loss of the largest intact rows in Fullerton, which dated back to at least the 1920s. It is understood that Goodman Logistics were entitled by City Council to remove these trees, although at the November 2nd council meeting with the developer present, there wasn't a request by past Mayor Potem Jan Florrie to look into the possibility of the developer making avocado scions available to the public so as to clone some of the historic trees. I am not sure if this ever happened. Also, at the November 17th council meeting, Jan Florrie also tasked the Director of Community and Economic Development with looking into the possibility of preserving some of the perimeter orchard trees, which would, which were not affecting or in the way of any building footprint. And two phone calls were never returned regarding this matter, and unfortunately, all trees, all of the original orchard trees were removed, even though some of them were growing in Goodman Logistics' proposed landscape space. And therefore, that basically means that 80-year-old trees will be replaced with five-year-old trees, which doesn't, just doesn't seem to make much sense. So I hope that some of you may be able to visit the site and see the aftermath of this very, very sudden change to the, to the aesthetic, you know, of, of this, this part of, you know, this very industrial, urbanized part of Fullerton, which had a very small and precious open space that is very sorely missed by the public now. Thank you.
Am I unmuted now, please?
Yes.
Great. Mayor, council members, and staff, it is absolutely great to be able to have Zoom for public comments now, but we also, I would like to also suggest that we have it at Commissions. For instance, Planning Commission tomorrow, there are some weighty decisions to be made, and the public and the public will be limited to the ecomments, which don't always get to make comments in the moment based on what the presentations have been. So if that can be done soon, please. Also, of course, we need to fix Zoom for closed sessions. I wanted to speak on item two and then item five and was not allowed to. Separate from that, I would like to ask that the city to counsel, develop new protocols when there are momentous weighty decisions going on. When I say public, I mean going through at least one other commission or committee before it goes to council. So the public also, so the commissioners have a chance to weigh in on the issue and also the public ahead of city council. There are some very large, very complex decisions being made sometimes, and I think they just kind of zoom through in a lot of cases. I do have to say it's beyond words that the historic police station and the iconic city hall building seem to be on the docket for sale right now. A few years ago, we were here to talk about the library going out of the hands of the Fullerton city. Three months ago, we were here for Bassett Sherry Tree Farm being removed as a park. Just yesterday and last week, the city was asking businesses and nonprofits to come in and take over several historic park buildings and recreation centers. I understand bidders flew in for a chance to have a crack at the park assets. These were never discussed in any public forum. And please, please do not tell us that we only have a chance to talk about it when it comes to the vote on who receives the contracts. That is too late. Hillcrest Park Duck Pond did not go through the proper public process either. This just goes on a nonstop, but these are just issues that are terribly upsetting to a lot of people in Fullerton. We think that some of these places are what makes Fullerton what it is. And we'd like to have a chance to at least hear your ideas and see why these things are being proposed, but we've not gotten that chance. I was not able to give comments before your vote at closed session. I would like to know more about that. If you are actually voting to sell the city hall and the police station and the parking lots, I would urge you to vote no, but I don't know if perhaps you've already voted. I just don't see how these could have gotten to this stage without public discussion. And if it does come before the public, will it already be just to consider sale that's already been hashed out with a willing seller and no public input on these essential issues? I have a few more questions on that, but I think the proper forum was the closed session. I just did not get a chance. And again, I would like to ask that new protocols be developed, and would you please let us know which items have already been voted on at closed session and what time we might expect that they'll be being heard again this evening? Thank you.
Rosio Lopez.
Hello, I was just making a phone call because he was telling me that on the screen. And here I am. My name is Rosio Lopez, as you mentioned. And the reason that I am here is to make a comment about the arrest Mr. Zahra recently had for battery against a woman. The Orange County District Attorney has filed battery charges against councilmen from District 5, Hamad Zahra. This is unacceptable behavior coming from a council member. I understand we all can make mistakes, but coming from a council member whom should be more in control of his emotions, since you are exposed to all type of comments, what kind of values and ethics drive you to set an example to this city and its constituents and the ones that are coming before you and ahead of you too? What principles are you guiding yourself by to better this city? It is a shame for this city, Fullerton, that is becoming, or is, yes, is becoming a crime scene for everybody, even for a council person, a member of the city, the Fullerton city. What example are you giving us? What example are you setting for our children? And what trust we parents have from you to make a good judgment when it comes to these cannabis dispensaries? We don't have a trust from you. I don't trust you as a mother, as a woman, and as a person. I don't trust your judgment at all because you have no values, no ethics, no principles, and you should really be ashamed and step down from your position. You're not a good example to anybody at all. And I'm afraid that you will, whenever you come out of that chamber, whenever, and if you are in a rage, I'm afraid to be near you because I will be afraid that you will injure myself in a way. So I don't really appreciate what you are doing in this city. And that's what I have to say. And we are in total support of Mayor Whitaker, Dunlap, and Jung. Thank you very much, all for your support.
Okay, Isla.
Good evening, Mayor Whitaker, Protem Mayor Dunlap, Fred Jung, Mayor Silva, and Ahmad. So sorry, I'm a little nervous, but I'm going to try my best. Actions speak louder than words. The only one that needs to step down from the council chamber is you, Ahmad, because the Orange County District Attorney has filed battery charges against our city councilmen from District 5, which happens to be my district, Hamad Zahra. This behavior is unacceptable to the citizens, and you should be ashamed of yourself and step down from the city council office immediately so somebody decent can do their job of representing us, the residents of District 5, and the whole city of Fullerton. You being a public server, working transparent, please explain to your fans, the call earlier, followers, why you still in office? And explain to me why you're not being, why are you hiding from me, from speaking to me? I email you, I text you, and you're hiding from me. Why? Explain that to the residents. Stop playing games with the residents and answer my emails and texts. And to Mayor Whitaker, Dunlap, and Fred Jung, we love you and we're behind you to fight against this cannabis business that are trying to control, and as you could see, all the messages, all the emails, they're trying to control, thanks to Ahmad that has these fans. Thank you for letting me speak. Have a great evening.
Damian Lloyd.
Are trying to control, and as you could see, all the messages, all the emails, they're trying to control, thanks to Ahmad that has these fans. Thank you for letting me speak. Have a great evening.
Damian.
Good evening. It's actually Tanya, his wife.
Okay.
It seems obvious that Ahmad rallied his supporters to write-
Damian Lloyd.
Yeah, this is my wife, Tanya, speaking. I hope that's okay. We only have one computer tonight.
Can you hear us?
Yes, there seems to be a delay. Go ahead.
Okay.
Would you mind putting your video off? Are you watching on your TV as well? There's some feedback.
Is that okay?
That's better.
Sorry about that. Okay, it seems obvious that Ahmad rallied his supporters to write in public comments tonight with these thoughtless and baseless rants that have wasted precious time and have debased the name of our rightfully and legally elected council members. Shame on you, Ahmad, for such low and dirty politics. I really expected more from you. And for those of you who wrote in, if you're going to trash someone, at least have the balls to give your full name. Okay, with that, good evening, council. My name is Tanya McCrory. My comments are in regard to our city manager's performance review that happened in closed session. Obviously, I don't know what was discussed there, but I have a few concerns of my own. I would like to know why Mr. Domer tried to give control of our city museum to Cal State Fullerton without the input of council or the museum board or Fullerton residents. I would like to know why Mr. Domer began requesting proposals for our city park facilities, flying developers in from out of town to look at becoming potential landlords, so to speak, of our park facilities, again, without public knowledge, and I believe without the full knowledge or consent of our new city council members. He also endorsed a baseless, unethical, and costly lawsuit against local journalist Josh Ferguson in order to cover up a massive cock-up by the police department, wasting Fullerton money. Lastly, I would like to know why Mr. Domer was so insistent that the only way out of our dire financial crisis was with a general sales tax. He went against the unanimous recommendation of the infrastructure committee to put forth a specific tax for road repair only. Instead, he and members of the last council ignored this recommendation outright and went full steam ahead for a general tax that ended up costing the residents over $250,000 in consultancy fees. Next time, you might consider asking me. I would have told you for free that Yes on S was going to be a big fat failure. It's time for fiscal reform, not more taxes or shady backroom deals. And now here we are with Mr. Domer trying to sell off public land to outside developers that belongs to Fullerton, and it appears to be happening in a less than transparent way. I believe the citizens of Fullerton deserve answers to these questions, and if someone could please email me the facts surrounding these three issues, I would most appreciate it. Thank you for letting me speak, and thank you for all who serve.
Tom Texter. Tom, please unmute.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening, Mayor Whitaker and council members. I'm here to speak about the invasive and rather destructive installation of the Fiber City Sci-Fi Fiber Optic Project in the city of Fullerton. Today, from 7:00 AM, jackhammers, sawcutters, trenchers, and massive trucks descended on our quiet neighborhood in Sunny Hills, where I've lived most of my life. On April 15, 2014, seven years ago, the city gave approval to enter an agreement with Sci-Fi Networks to install a fiber optic network citywide. The plan proposed Sci-Fi focus fiber optic cable utilizing sewers, sewers, to deploy cable-carrying fiber through sections of sewer network and standard fiber optic cable installed by micro trenching. After approval by city council, it appeared later the project changed significantly. The sewer project was completely dropped, and the new plan would include sawcutting and jackhammering and asphalt removal and baulder installation in every neighborhood. I believe the change in decision to go a different route by choosing a different method than what was originally presented was done without public knowledge and without public comment regarding the change. I could be wrong. I will find out. Fullerton is known as having the most neglected and potholed streets in North Orange County. I had $1,600 worth of damage done to my car after hitting a huge pothole last year. This project of sawcutting and jackhammering our city streets that are already so incredibly damaged adds insult to injury. Some city streets, like Crestview Drive, are down to the dirt base and have not been maintained for decades. Sawcutting and jackhammering will further destroy this street. These streets are a liability to people who live here. Neighborhoods that include Atlanta Drive, West Fern Drive, and Valley View neighborhoods clearly show inferior and professional workmanship where streets have been jackhammered and deeply sawcut that have been carelessly backfilled with colored cement that looks haphazard and unsightly. These sawcut and jackhammered streets will allow seepage of water and will further compromise our very weakened road infrastructure. Multicolored spray painting of driveways, sidewalks, and streets have not been removed since last October. It's disconcerting that the city of Fullerton is being used as a guinea pig for this installation citywide. The city does not get a penny from this project. The city of Fullerton has no say over this network, and Sci-Fi and Fiber City will decide the rates and terms on which local businesses and residents can use. The all-in costs for Ting are 64 to 93 monthly for internet. The costs online are misleading. You can get internet bundled far less with Spectrum and AT&amp;T. Fullerton will have little capacity to guard its interests if Sci-Fi decides to sell, goes bankrupt, or is acquired by an undesirable company. In addition, in 2014, there was questioning about the feasibility of the business plan because it anticipated investor funding in the tens of millions prior to subscription commitments. I would like to know if this project is currently fully funded by investors at this time. Also, what are the projections if Sci-Fi goes bankrupt or wants to sell to an undesirable company? Unfortunately, the concept of connectivity was far more important to the city than repairing our streets. The citizens of Fullerton will be left with sawcut streets and unsightly and dangerous roads for years to come. Thank you, and I suggest you, Gavin Newsom opened up the state of California. I suggest you open up the city hall so that we can have an open forum and discuss these issues that are serious to our city. Thank you very much.
Caller 1911.
Bueno, sí?
Yes, we can hear you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Cassandra.
Good evening. My name is Cassandra.
Y hoy me quiero dirigir al señor alcalde Whitaker.
I'd like to address Mayor Whitaker.
Y a los concejales Dunlap y Jung.
And Councilman Dunlap and Jung.
Quiero expresar mi total apoyo con ustedes.
I'd like to express my full support to you.
Y que por favor no escuchen todas las groserías que ahorita les acaban de mandar en los comentarios públicos.
And to please not to pay attention or listen to all the negative comments that have been made so far.
Claramente estamos viendo-
Clearly, we're seeing-
Que el señor Ahmad, el concejal Ahmad-
The councilman Ahmad.
Está trabajando con la política sucia.
He's playing dirty tricks, dirty politics.
Pagándole tal vez a la gente con regalos baratos.
Perhaps he's buying people with some cheap gifts.
Para que hablen mal de ustedes en este meeting.
So that those people talk badly about you guys in today's meeting.
Nosotros, los del Distrito 5-
Us, from District 5.
Ya sabemos que el señor Ahmad-
Know, that Mr. Ahmad.
Nos hace regalos como juguetes de navidad o útiles escolares.
Gives us gifts such as toys or school supplies.
Pero realmente ese no es su trabajo.
But truly, that shouldn't be his work.
Su trabajo es escuchar nuestras necesidades y lo que nosotros queremos en nuestro distrito 5 y en Fullerton.
His work should be to listen to us, to listen to what we need here at Fullerton and in District 5.
Y lo que nosotros realmente queremos es que no se pongan los dispensarios de marihuana.
And what we truly want is for the marijuana dispensaries not to be placed here.
Eso es todo mi comentario. Gracias.
That's all. Thank you.
Kurt Johnston.
Yes, you can hear me okay?
Yes.
I was wondering about those Vote OC boxes. There's one down at the train station that's been there for a while since the election. It appears like it's becoming a permanent fixture. And so I was concerned that a lot of people don't see that as a valid, yet verified way of voting as far as a fair way of voting. So if that's becoming a permanent fixture, it's sort of making a statement that this is going to be the new norm. So I was wondering if Fullerton has a say in their voting, whether, or is this something that the county places there? And we don't have a choice about the removal of this box in our transportation terminal? Thank you.
Carolina Hernandez. Carolina, please unmute.
Si, buenas noches, me escucha?
Good evening, can you hear me? Adelante.
Buenas noches, esta noche yo no iba a comentar, pero al escuchar todos los comentarios al principio.
I wasn't gonna comment anything tonight, but after hearing all these previous comments.
Me trajo a hacer mi comentario, y nada más quiero decir definitivamente está visto y está hecho que estos comentarios fueron traídos por el señor Ahmad o sus amigos del señor Ahmad.
I mean, clearly, I mean, these comments here today were brought by Mr. Ahmad or Mr. Ahmad's friends.
Porque yo nunca había escuchado tantos comentarios en contra de los señor alcalde.
Because I've never heard any, so many bad comments about the mayor.
Pero aunque todos los comentarios que hayan hecho esta noche hayan sido verdad, realmente nada comparado con lo que el señor Ahmad ha hecho, que es el cargo que tienen de golpear a una mujer, así que.
But anything that could have been said about the mayor, even if it were true, does not compare with what Mr. Ahmad has done with such as hitting a woman.
Es por eso que yo le digo al señor Bruce y a los nuevos concejales que tienen mi apoyo.
Which is why I tell Mr. Bruce and the new council persons that you have my support.
Y al señor Ahmad, yo le quiero decir que yo fui una de las que voté para que usted estuviera ahí, pero voy a ser una de las que voy a votar para que usted no esté ahí. Gracias.
And to Mr. Ahmad, I would like to let you know that I was one of the people that voted for you to be in your position now, but I will now vote for you to be out of that position. Thank you.
No more comments.
Thank you for that, and City Manager Domer, good luck summarizing some of those comments. Madam Clerk, excellent job of holding up through all of that. I do want to, before we begin with council reports, or first with the city manager's report, point out that there is a problem right now, which you're well aware of. We did discuss it earlier today even with some of the comments which are provided, which are anonymous. And what we attempt to do, the city council, is give everyone an opportunity to speak, but only once. And when we have comments from afar and they're anonymous, or it's just guest, guest user, there's no way of telling whether it's a unique commenter or someone making multiple comments. And that being the case, there is a flaw, at least in our attempts to try to maintain that one set of comments per individual. So we will likely have to come up with a better plan on how to handle those in the future. We do have much else in the way of business. We always love to hear from our constituents, but to the extent that we know that those are unique constituents, and hopefully they provide their names in the process, we certainly invite your comments. I would like to say that we do urge members of the public to at least filter and try to remain civil, and please observe civility and a polite manner when addressing. It's fine to direct even very large criticism, certainly at any council members that you wish to do that, but very often, any amount of constructive suggestions or advice or commentary are lost in that process. So again, thank you for everyone who took the time to provide your views to us this evening, and hopefully we'll improve on this entire situation as we go forward. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Try to address some of these things. I do know that we will be talking about the museum later on tonight. Regarding the library closure and that others are open, yeah, we really want to try to get the library open as soon as possible now with the lifting of the stay-at-home restrictions. However, for us, it is a staffing situation. We did lay off all of our non-regulars, or not all, but a majority of our non-regulars. And so we will be addressing the library hours as we go further into this fiscal year, as funding is available, and then most certainly for the next fiscal year during the budget process. Regarding Ms. Texter, she has been in contact with several staff. We also made sure that she was in contact with the Sci-Fi president and even, I believe, the Corbell, who is the contractor personnel about the Fiber City project. We've provided her a lot of information on that, and I know that we will continue to hear from her on this issue and work with the other residents in that area. Sci-Fi continues to move forward through the contractor. We are addressing the quality issues on the street as they go from different streets. Right now, there are some streets that do not have sidewalks, and of course, when the streets are in poor condition to begin with, it doesn't make the fiber cutting that good. And sometimes, yes, there are going to be underground service alert marks on the pavement. Those are designed to come off or wash away eventually after the work is done. And unfortunately, sometimes there are utilities in the way that do get cut, and that is attempted to minimize as much as possible. On the Vote OC box, I'm gonna turn that over to City Clerk Lucinda, if you have any information on that one.
I had a feeling that question was coming my way. Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, and Council. The ballot drop boxes are located throughout the county, and in most locations, I believe they are going to be there for at least five years. That was the agreement that we went into with the county, what year is last year, 2020? So in 2018, I believe, we started using those, if I remember correctly. Whenever they first went in, we did the five-year agreement. Maybe it was March of 2020.
And on that issue, one of the reasons I think they're set in place is because they're pretty hefty and have a lot of girth to them to prevent any type of damage. But I do understand that maybe if people see them out there all the time, they may not consider them as something that is just special for the elections, but hopefully that's not the case, so. And then one last thing on the RFPs. Yes, we are looking at bringing information to the city council. We've released an RFP about expanding services at our community centers. You know, it's an example that we did the city several years ago with the Richmond Community Center, and where the city partnered with the Centers for Healthy Neighborhood, expanded the services greatly to the community. So in our financial condition, we are looking at, okay, can we bring this model to other community centers and make sure that we are offering those services that the communities adjacent and around the community centers can do? So not sure about the whole flying in of people. We did have three dates that interested parties could look at those centers, and staff was out there to answer any questions. But, and let's see, I think that it's it for right now, unless there's any questions from city council.
Seeing no questions from council members, we'll go through our council comments as well. If anyone wants to lead off, is welcome. Councilmember Silva?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick comment on the community centers. I would be opposed to selling or getting rid of our assets, but seeing what happened at the Richmond Community Center, from being closed to having tutoring, after-school tutoring, having parent classes, having health clinics, just the abundance of service that have been provided to the residents there because we brought in a third party, those services we, the city, could not have done without the help. So, you know, it may seem like we're trying to get rid of them, but we're not. We're trying to, and if you ever, when this is over or we can set up an arrangement, if you want to go see what's happening at the Richmond Community Center, you would be amazed of the services they have been providing and will continue to provide, hopefully, and they're still doing it now through Zoom. One of my students volunteered to tutor elementary kids through the community center. So good work's being done there. And so again, yeah, if we were just gonna sell them and get rid of them, that would be a no-go, but if we can duplicate what has happened at the Richmond Community Center, it would be worth it to a lot of residents. And that's all I have for today, Mr. Mayor.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I can follow up on that, and I do apologize for not stating that, but we are not selling the community centers nor any of our assets. Absolutely not. If anything, we're wanting to make sure that they're activated and that we can take better care of and use our resources to better care of those assets. But yeah, the option of selling it is not on the table.
Sure. Mayor Protem Dunlap?
Thank you. I think one of the most important things that we can do, you know, as civil servants up here, is as these items come before this body, it's making these conversations public so that the public can in fact participate. Because unfortunately, I think a lot of times when information is unknown, yeah, obviously things that aren't true can get perpetuated, and we all know how quickly information can be shared. And so I just want to say that I fully support transparency and making sure that we do have this dialogue and these conversations in the public, that we're sharing this information with the public. So on that note, a few comments. First, to lead off, I guess, on a happy note, February is here, and that means that it's Girl Scouts Cookies time. So you can actually support local Girl Scouts by going onto GirlScouts.org, and if you enter your zip code, you can get information on where to buy. Or if you've noticed across the street, there's actually quite an enterprising young lady who's got signs all set up, and I'm sure she can take care of you as well. We also had, shifting gears to city business, had the first meeting with the Vector Control Board. There's nothing really substantive to report this month, but we'll be sure to, you know, update you going forward. And in response to two recent cyclist deaths, I've received some detailed correspondence with great ideas and concepts from Fullerton residents as to how we can make, you know, the trails and streets safer, both for, you know, for Fullerton residents and cyclists. And I'm gonna give this information to the city manager's office and so that he can instruct staff, you know, to work with these residents to do just that. Also, I wanted to revisit the comment from Ms. Texter. I've had some correspondence with her and numerous residents regarding this unsightly and shoddy workmanship on the fiber optics project. And, you know, I actually took the time to go out and, you know, walk and drive some of these jobs myself. And, you know, I want to make it clear that we really need our staff, whether it's Public Works or other, to hold this vendor accountable and to hold their subcontractors accountable. You know, residents are frustrated, and they're at their wits' end, and they seem to be getting minimal support from city staff here. And really, city staff is the only, you know, avenue that these people have for help, and so we need to be there for them. But what's interesting about this, and what's perhaps more frustrating, is that the general or the subcontractor that Sci-Fi is using, you know, I'm hearing of things like their, you know, employees or their laborers have, you know, been caught actually urinating in people's front yards, have gotten into altercations with residents, in addition to a slew of other issues. And, you know, I ask myself, hey, is this the type of vendor that I would hire to do work on my house? And the answer is absolutely not. And so we need to make sure that we hold Sci-Fi accountable. We need to make sure that they're holding their subcontractor accountable. And I think we also need to revisit any agreement or arrangement that was made with Sci-Fi to make sure that, you know, in the cases where there's, you know, unsightly or shoddy workmanship left behind, that we are, you know, holding them accountable, that they're not only correcting it, but perhaps they're, you know, slurring over some of these issues so that they're leaving the streets at least in, you know, equal to, if not greater than, condition than they found them. And then lastly, to end on a positive note, had a number of, you know, young residents here in Fullerton, high school students and community college students reach out about getting involved in the community. And, Mr. City Manager, I'd appreciate it, maybe if you could give an update on the Youth Academy that I believe is gonna be launching later this year, because I think that's gonna be a great opportunity to get some of these young people involved in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlap. Councilmember Young?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to provide an update to council and to you, Mr. Mayor, on the Orange County Power Authority. I am pleased to note that we are making great progress. We've hired two staff. OCPA CEO is Mr. Brian Pobolski, and the COO is Mrs. Antonio Graham. I wanted to make commentary that Fullerton knew how much we'll miss Ms. Graham and her good work here. More Orange County cities will certainly be invited into the Orange County Power Authority this year, and I will share more with you as we continue forward. And lastly, I'd like to recognize that February is Black History Month. Please observe it accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Zara?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to also acknowledge and Black History Month, and hopefully, a month where we can reflect on our nation and our communities and let it be a month of healing and understanding. I also want to ask our community members, I know a lot, there's a lot of frustration out there on a lot of issues, but regardless of our philosophical and political differences often up here on the dais, we always have to maintain respect of each other, so I ask that of our community as well, that we look out for each other, and we are all trying our best to do what we believe is right for our city and our community. So I hope that we can unite in that effort. And with that, that is all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for that. What I'd like to talk about today, first of all, Happy Groundhog Day, which is certainly a more significant date for the northeast part of the United States than it is here on our west coast. But what it means is that we're in the middle of our rainy season, or at least usually the heaviest portion of our rainy season, and we've encountered that recently. As my activities on the Orange County Water District provide some of the statistics, I will share updates as possible. Right now, the, and please bear with me if you know a lot of this, because I'm really speaking to those who this topic might be a little more new to. The aquifer, the basin which underlies the northern two-thirds of Orange County, is that great resource that we have. That resource provides for the city of Fullerton up to 77% of the water that we use. We are fortunate to be able to draw water pretty much directly from those underground resources and for which we do pay the Orange County Water District on the amount of water that we utilize in the city. The Orange County Water District is the groundwater regulator for that upper two-thirds of Orange County. And the, these measures, let me please explain some of these measures for you. One acre foot of water, it's about a football field, one foot deep, which is 326,000 gallons, so three acre feet is about a million gallons of water. One acre foot will supply the normal needs indoors and outdoors for the average resident, for two residents. So one acre foot can supply two residents, residential units for an entire year. Now, these numbers, storage, groundwater recharge, and use, these are measures by which we understand what's happening with the basin, with the aquifer. Each season, we measure, and right now, the storage, the capacity of the aquifer is 72% full currently, which is up 1.7% over the level last year. The groundwater recharge is a result in part of the GWRS, the groundwater system, where we take and purify a formerly wastewater into freshwater, and that is pumped up to the northern basins, mostly around the Anaheim area, and put back into the ground to allow the natural filtration process to happen. This is called recharge, which helps to keep the basin from being overdrawn, from too much water being taken from that. The measure this year on groundwater recharge is 106,213 acre feet, which have been added. On the use side, that's how much all the members within the Orange County Water District, member cities, including Fullerton, for groundwater pumping, how much water in total is being taken out of the aquifer. And this year, 153,210 acre feet, year-to-date. That's a little bit lower than last year at this stage, which was 0.7% lower last year. We have slower economic activity due to the lockdown and due to COVID-19, and that's largely responsible for the reduction in use. largely responsible for the reduction in use. There are projections for this rainy season, what's going to happen, because very often, the heaviest rains don't really come until about mid-February, at least in many years. And right now, precipitation is running less than we would like. In fact, the projection, the best projection they have right now, the current one, is that this year is shaping up to be this water year, oh, and water years run through September 30th. So we're still within this water year, at least for measurement purposes. And the odds that they've set for this to become a normal year, a normal year precipitation for us, are only at about 30%. So we're likely looking at encountering a drought year. And during those drought years, we do receive more pressure upon all water agencies to try to not overdraw the condition, and also for the Orange County Water District, to make sure and utilize strategies to increase recharge of the aquifer. And an average year is right around 13 and 1/2 inches of rain per year, per season. So it's looking like we would undershoot that right now by most expert projections. But they are just that, projections. We may have still a significant amount of storminess yet to come. And that is about where I better leave this report. I hate to bore everyone with too many numbers. What I'd like to do, though, is comment further on the notion of, you know, all five of us council members are here, and we put in significant hours, as does certainly paid staff, and other members of the city, of our communities, neighbors and friends who do look in on council meetings and try to evaluate what's going on. I think it's really important that all of us do our best to refrain from politicking and/or bringing campaigns into these chambers. There's a term called feathering your own nest, and then there's also soiling your own nest. And to some extent, any, anything that really misses the mark in terms, again, of being civil or being constructive is potentially something where we're fouling our own nest here. And I would urge each council member to do what they can to speak to people about lifting the level of dialogue and communication with the council, and I think we would all profit from that. Now, obviously, we're going to have people who won't abide by those instructions. What I would like to do as mayor is intervene when someone really crosses a line, to provide at least some insulation from something that's very salacious for any member up here. Of course, that becomes more possible if we aren't subtly encouraging that sort of activity. So I just wanted to take a second to point out that these things affect all of us. It certainly affects the image of the city, and it affects anything that we do in terms of trying to be constructive and bring about better results as a result of our time on the council. So, I mean, you know a lot of this, but I think it's important to call attention to the fact that we could elevate. It's within our power to help elevate these meetings, and maybe shorten the duration of them a little bit, too. But with that, we are now at the stage of, oh, were there any other comments by anyone? Okay, seeing none. I don't want to shortchange anybody here. The next item is our consent calendar, or, I'm sorry, I'm skipping by at-large appointments. That's right. I have something ready on that myself. Madam Clerk, do you want to take charge here?
Taking charge. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is part two of the committee appointments from the last city council meeting. Mayor Whitaker has a direct appointment to make on the Transportation and Circulation Commission. That's a carryover from the last meeting. In addition, a panel of the mayor, councilmember Jung, and a committee member, representative have interviewed applicants for the one at-large seat on the Investment Advisory Committee, and the two at-large seats on the Infrastructure and Natural Resources Advisory Committee. It's council preference, which you'd like to appoint first, but if you want to follow along in the order that's on your agenda packet, the first item up would be Mayor Whitaker's Transportation and Circulation Commission appointment.
Yes. And do you have the applicants for that? Do you have a list for who has expressed an interest?
I could dig it up very quickly if you like.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's not completely necessary, but I thought anyone that takes the time to apply and show an interest here is worthy of being mentioned here.
I know there were three.
Okay.
There they are, and they were. Chris Norby. Very long application to scroll through. Quentin Jones. And Kevin Chang. Where are your three applicants?
My selection on this is Chris Norby, who served 18 years on this council, and seven years at the Board of Orange County Supervisors. He has a lot of experience being an OCTA board member, and then was a state assembly member as well. At every level that he's served in government, he and I have had the conversation before, that transportation is the largest single issue for all these various agencies. So I think that he brings a lot of experience and maybe some wisdom to this role, and I heartily extend the appointment to him. But I also want to encourage the other two applicants to keep knocking on the door, because we do need good people on these commissions. And that's it for that choice. Madam Clerk.
And if we get a motion and second to ratify?
I'll make the motion.
And a roll call, or?
Because it's like quasi-remote, shall we do roll call tonight? Okay. Councilmember Jung?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dunlap?
Aye.
And Mayor Whitaker?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. And the next one would be Investment Advisory Committee for one at-large seat?
I conducted the interviews with applicants and, along with councilmember Jung, and I'd like to turn to him to help convey what our recommendation is for these seats.
Well, Mr. Mayor, fellow councilmembers, Fullerton is blessed with many qualified volunteer applicants for these three positions, these at-large vacancies. The mayor and I conducted our interviews with candidates, along with Dr. Mark Shapiro for the Infrastructure and Natural Resources Committee, and Ms. Lynn Lauderdale of the Investment Advisory Committee. I'd like to thank both Dr. Shapiro and Mrs. Lauderdale for their continued service. The at-large recommendations being made to council for your consideration this evening are as follows. Mr. Louis Bernal for the Investment Advisory Committee, Mr. Arnold Dino for the Infrastructure and Natural Resources Committee, and Dr. Ryan Alcantara for the Infrastructure and Natural Resources Committee. And with that, I'll make a motion on all three, if I can. Would that be right, or no? Yes? All right. Thank you.
And I will second.
And I'd like to add, before we come to a vote on it, that I heartily concur with the quality, with the caliber of the applicants for these roles. And in conjunction with that, this council is going to be considering later in this meeting, some potential changes in the makeup of these committees, which might allow a few more talented individuals to represent the city in these efforts as advisory members to the city council. And with that, Madam Clerk, if there's nothing further, we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Jung?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dunlap?
Aye.
And Mayor Whitaker?
Aye. And I'd like to thank the councilmembers for having faith, at least, in our recommendations. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may take one second, with the appointment of Mr. Dino at a large, I now have an open position for my direct appointee to the Infrastructure Committee, correct? Because he's moving from me, so I can come back in two weeks and fill that.
Yes, I will double-check that for you. And Mayor, I meant to tell you that there were no ecomments on this item, but we may have had some online comments.
There are no hands raised at the moment.
Okay.
It was for a second, but I think they lowered them, so.
Okay.
I apologize. I do want to make sure that those comments get noticed. And with that, we are now at city representation for regional advisory bodies and work groups, Metropolitan Water District, Board of Directors, Independent Cities Risk Management Authority, and Santa Ana River Flood Protection Agency. And I would like to convey that I requested the agendizing of this item, the Metropolitan Water District, which our current representative has, well, in fact, he's expressed an interest in addressing us this evening. I know that we received something in print from him as well, and I suspect that we will have quite a few comments on this. I just, I just thought it was important to convey to members of the council that whomever this council chooses to represent, to be its face to these regional boards, to be out there, is strictly a matter of the council's decision. And my personal view, the reason that this is agendized, is it is far preferable, and for many reasons, that we have a council member. If a council member expresses interest in filling these positions, it's my personal belief that we should give that very strong consideration. And if more than one council member expresses an interest, then this council has a decision to make. It's always been a fallback position when we turn to experts, citizens, people who are not members of this council, to fill in at times, because the time commitment on this seat is extreme. And many times in the past, council members haven't had the time nor the inclination to be the representative to Metropolitan Water District. Since I've been on this council, we've had five different MWD representatives. So these changes occur relatively often. And it just is important to me that we have, when we have new council members, that we get an opportunity to express our preferences. And that's the rationale for this being brought before us this evening. If there's any other commentary now, before we go to public comments?
I will note, sorry, if I could very quickly, Mr. Mayor, that this item also includes an appointment to the, I can never remember the acronym, Independent Cities Risk Management Board and the Santa Ana River Flood Protection Agency. So while you're taking public comments, you may have some on those positions also. And Mr. Ortega is on Zoom, if you'd like to ask him to talk.
I just have one question, Mr. Mayor, if I may. The, for the Metropolitan Water District, I wanted to just clarify what the term is, what this, when this would actually end.
Oh, you mean if it were allowed to continue?
Yes. I believe it was, was it a four-year term?
It was a four-year term. I think it's-
He's midway in a four-year term currently.
December 31st, 2022.
Right. Okay. Thank you. That's all.
And, yes, Madam Clerk, I guess not bifurcate, but I was going to trifurcate this item, because we'll take separate votes.
You may want to for the discussion, but under public comments, you may get him under all three appointments.
I see. Yes. Good catch. And with that, is there, okay, I don't see anything else, so we could go to public comments.
And did you want to hear from Mr. Ortega individually, or did you want him just beginning of your public comments?
Oh, it's, it's his option, but if he wants to lead off, that would be fine.
Don?
Yes, I'm here. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mayor Whitaker and members of the city council. I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity of serving as the city's ninth representative on the Metropolitan Water District Board of Directors. I've been serving in this capacity since 2019. Over the last two years, I have devoted a monthly average of 60 hours as Met Director, totaling approximately 1,400 hours since 2019, to represent the best interests of the city of Fullerton and its citizens on the issues of water affordability, quality and reliability, as well as on administrative and leadership matters related to Met's board members and senior managers. There are important issues pending that I would like to advise you about should the city council decide to appoint a representative from within its membership, ending my tenure midway through my term. Wanted to say that Metropolitan Water District, for the public, you ought to know that it imports water from the Colorado River and the State Water Project in northern California. It involves large infrastructure. And the position offers no pay or benefits, just to clarify to the public. Given the recent city council elections, which brought new members, I support Mayor Bruce Whitaker, that Mayor Bruce Whitaker is raising this question in choice during this meeting of the city council. I endeavored to make sure that city council members understand the issues facing Metropolitan, and thus Fullerton water policy during a key transitional period. During 2021, Metropolitan's board's activities will be marked by the recruitment of a new general manager and completion of a 25-year Integrated Resources Plan and a rate refinement process that will determine the sources of revenues and basis for water rates to support core activities like conservation, water recycling, as well as imported water deliveries and water stewardship for a region covering from Ventura to the Mexican border along the coastal plain. Amidst all of this, Metropolitan faces deep questions about the emotional and physical safety of the workforce, the accountability of its management, the oversight by the board, and the effectiveness of our leadership. This is in the current backdrop of both a news media investigation and an independent investigation of Metropolitan's enforcement of sexual harassment, equal employment practices, and the rigor of our administrative code and ethics policies. With Fullerton's modest 0.6%, 0.9% of the vote, I have nonetheless played a key leadership role at Metropolitan without any rank. Credited to my specific efforts with other Metropolitan directors and staff are a COVID payment deferral program for member agencies and financial stress, a budget compromise that reduced expected rate increases, the hiring of an independent investigator through our ethics officer to examine sexual harassment and EEO complaint handling by management and inside legal counsel, initiation of a, and planning for a discounted groundwater replenishment program to raise new revenues, given declining water sales, an integrated planning process through a single committee instead of its bifurcation into several committees that would have compromised stakeholder participation and transparency. I am proud to have made motions and suggestions leading to these outcomes. Again, I respect the city council's prerogative. By my count, of Metropolitan's 14 municipal members, nine send appointed members from the public, such as myself, to represent them. These include Beverly Hills, Burbank, Long Beach, Pasadena, San Marino, Santa Monica, Torrance, and Los Angeles. By sending a member of the city council, Fullerton would be joining five cities that already do so, including Anaheim, Compton, Glendale, San Fernando, and Santa Ana. I am not recommending one alignment over another, but presenting you with this fact. It is indeed an honor to serve, no matter what the city council decides to do with its representation at Metropolitan. I agree that it could be prudent for the city council to permit me to complete some immediate tasks I have been closely involved with on the MWD board that should conclude in June. Please count on me to support and/or serve the city council of Fullerton in the policies affecting our water resources and water rates in whichever capacity you choose. Thank you very much, members of the city council, and Mayor Whitaker.
Thank you, Mr. Ortega. Any other comments?
We do have a few public comments still on Zoom.
Sure. Let's hear those.
Roy Wolf?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Dr. Roy Wolf, a 20-year Fullerton resident, and based on my background in water, I'm here to strongly recommend that you reaffirm Mr. Adon Ortega to the MWD board. This is a critical appointment for the city and has enormous implications for the cost of our water and its reliability. I'm a retired former senior executive at MWD, having managed a number of departments there for nearly 29 years, including constructing Diamond Valley Lake and many upgrades for our Colorado River Aqueduct. I was also chair of the Board of Directors of the Water Research Foundation, representing the water research needs for over 1,000 water utilities in the United States, and have a PhD in water quality from University of California, Irvine. Adon Ortega is one of the most knowledgeable board members MWD has ever had. He is thoroughly engaged on every major issue and always looks out for the best interests of the citizens of Fullerton. Mr. Ortega has led the efforts to ensure Fullerton continues to have our a reliable supply of high-quality water from MWD at the lowest possible cost. As one example, he successfully negotiated for a lower water rate increase, which directly resulted in money savings for the citizens of Fullerton. Now, in my experience, it takes many years for a new board member to understand MWD's complex water issues, including water rights, legislation, regulations, and water quality. Without Mr. Ortega on the board, other large agencies of MWD with paid more board members will take advantage of cities like Fullerton. Mr. Ortega has not allowed that to happen on his watch. I'm very pleased to see Fullerton City Council members participating in various regional entities. However, serving on Metropolitan's board should not be viewed as a perk. It will require a minimum of 15 to 20 hours of work each week by attending more than a dozen committee and board meetings each month, as well as meetings with other agencies and organizations and participating in numerous workshops. This appointment receives no financial compensation whatsoever. Mr. Ortega has done all of this at no cost to Fullerton because of his passion for water and public service. If Mr. Ortega is replaced with someone who does not possess the same commitment, dedication, and water knowledge, I am certain it will cost the citizens of Fullerton more money for their water. As a result, I strongly recommend that the council reaffirm Mr. Ortega to MWD's board. You will not find a more outstanding public servant for the city. I would like to close my comments with a quote by Mark Twain about water in California, who said, "Whiskey is for drinking and water is for fighting over." Well, Mr. Ortega will fight for Fullerton. Thank you for the opportunity to comment this evening.
Thank you for providing your opinion, sir. We appreciate that.
Jeff Cable?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Whitaker and council members. My name's Jeff Cable, and I'm an officer in ASME 1902 Group 12. I was also the Ethics Office Investigator at Metropolitan for 10 years and interim director for 10 months. This evening, I'm calling in support of Adon Ortega to remain as your representative on the Metropolitan Board. You've heard of his expertise in water, and I'd like to add to that narrative. When I first joined Metropolitan 15 years ago, Ortega was the Director of External Affairs. I didn't have a chance to meet him then, but in my position, I heard a lot about him. He had a reputation for pushing employees to be better, to constantly improve their work, and he supported those efforts with training and collaboration and education. But he was a tough guy to blow smoke at, not because he was intimidating, but because he had connections all over the district and could find information faster than someone could spin it. By the time I found my feet at Metropolitan, Ortega had left to pursue his own interests, and I honestly forgot about him until he returned as your representative. I'm happy to see he hasn't changed much. He pushes the board to follow their own administrative code, which they sometimes play fast and loose with, and he doesn't hesitate to call for clarification if a motion isn't clear or well-formed. I have a lot of reasons to support Ortega, but probably you're more interested in why you should support him. He's openly voiced opposition to increased water rates. I don't believe your families need a higher water bill, and Metropolitan doesn't need the money. He's seen all of our facilities and processes as only the former head of External Affairs could. When someone highlights issues at our offices in Sacramento or Parker Dam or our facility in Temecula, he understands the subtext of their report because he's been there. Let's look at his current work. Metropolitan is in the middle of a recruitment for a new general manager, and Ortega has worked actively alongside committee members, our external recruiters and HR, in developing the job description and desirable qualities for a successful candidate. Clearly, having him continue through the process is an asset to the city of Fullerton. He's also helped initiate a formal external investigation into sexual harassment and retaliation at Metropolitan. I've heard from several directors who supported Ortega, but were afraid to speak on the record because they feared retaliation. I think Ortega was also concerned about retaliation, but spoke out anyway. Sponsored by directors Trevino, Ballin, and Ortega, the motion passed the board with full bipartisan support, no abstentions or recusals. The impact of this cannot be overstated. That investigation has just begun, and again, having someone with the experience and internal connections like Adon Ortega is an asset. This, in my opinion, is what stubborn representation looks like. Not surprisingly, Fullerton has more influence on the Metropolitan Board now than they have in a long time. That alone should warrant his return. Thank you for your time, and good evening.
Thank you. Next commenter, please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council and staff. My name is Laura Garcia, and I am a resident of downtown Los Angeles and the Vice President of ASME Local 1902. We represent about 80% of the water workers at the Metropolitan Water District in addition to eight other water districts in Southern California. I'm here to speak on item 2 under appointments, and I'm requesting that you reaffirm the current appointee, Adon Ortega, as a Director to the Metropolitan Water District Board. Mr. Ortega has taken a public stance in support of employees and has been outspoken in his demand for transparency from the Metropolitan Water District in respect to water rates, the upcoming general manager selection, equal employment opportunity, and maintaining a safe workplace. As the Vice President of External Affairs at Metropolitan from 1999 to 2005, Adon Ortega is uniquely equipped with the institutional knowledge, important relationships, and a deep understanding of the inner workings of MWD. He has a wealth of water industry and public service experience, which makes him a perfect fit for this position. Ortega has proven he can continue asking the tough questions and will ensure Fullerton residents have a safe, in the safety and reliability of their water. Please vote to reaffirm Adon Ortega to the board. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sylvia Ballin?
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, good evening, council members. I'm Director Sylvia Ballin on the Metropolitan Water District Board, representing the city of San Fernando and currently serve as mayor. I'm writing in support of Adon Ortega and ask that you reaffirm his current appointment. Allegations have come to my attention, the recent removal of Director Charles Trevino and potential removal of Director Adon Ortega by the respective appointing agencies has, have been advocated by those who wish to silence Director Ortega. Unfortunately, they succeeded in silencing Director Trevino. My guess is these forces go in power since they succeeded in having Director Trevino removed from the Metropolitan Board. Please read the letter I sent you and emailed you today. Director Ortega Trevino, and I sent a letter to, emailed you, the Chair Murray of the Operations Personnel Committee dated October 20th, 2020. Our ask was, was what every director should embrace in light of the public comments made by several women employees about alleged sexual harassment, systemic workplace harassment, and fair retaliation. It has been reported, Orange County influencers made calls to members of the Fullerton City Council and others in order to urge Director Ortega's replacement on the MWD Board. As you stated, Mayor, this is usually a four-year appointment. So this, the timing is rather curious. Retaliation is a big word, and it feels like our letter appears to have placed a target on our backs. Director, Directors Trevino and Ortega joined me in pursuing the EEO and workplace harassment issues which remain pending. The action by influencers to lobby for the removal of Director Trevino and Ortega appear as reprisals for our position on recent issues that have come before the board, such as the pending employee sexual harassment complaints and failed appointment of a non-diverse slate of committee chairs to serve on the board's executive committee. These actions encourage a culture of fair and retribution among members of the board. The message is speak at your peril. Please reaffirm Director Ortega's appointment to the MWD Board. We need him today more than ever. He is an excellent representative for Fullerton, and your residents would be paying far more today if, for water service, if not for Director Ortega. We should never bear retaliation. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Madam Mayor.
Jeffrey Froelich?
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Fullerton Council. My name's Jeffrey Froelich. I'm actually a resident of Anaheim, but I'm also the business representative of ASME Local 1902, representing the hard-working women and men at the Metropolitan Water District. I'm calling again to echo support for Director Adon Ortega. It should be important to note that when you invest in employees anywhere and give them a voice, you're also investing in your community. And Mr. Ortega has not only been there to protect the working folks of Metropolitan, but indirectly by ensuring safe, quality, and efficient water services to the residents of Fullerton and particularly some of the residents in the more vulnerable areas of Fullerton, which is key and critical. Everybody has access to clean and safe water, and employees have the right to go to work without fear of retaliation. Mr. Ortega has been a champion of both these sides for the community and the employees. Thank you very much, and we urge you again to reaffirm Mr. Ortega's appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Froelich, for your comments.
Joshua?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hello, council. I'd like to speak as a person who actually lives in Fullerton and not a union hack or vested interest trying to get their friend reinstated into a position. Setting aside Adon Ortega, Adon Ortega's gross racism that he likes to parent around pretty regularly online, I'd like to point out one thing that nobody's talking about, and that's the fact that he is involved in an organization called Ortega Strategies Group, which looks to be a lobbying firm in the municipal water industry. That seems like a problem Fullerton needs to get away from. We already had a lobbyist mayor, and it's time to actually put the interest of Fullerton residents first and not the interest of lobbyists, self-dealers, and grifters in front of everybody else. Of course, he has a lot of information and a lot of connections. That's literally how he seems to survive. I mean, you don't need to be paid from the city of Fullerton when your pot hand is already in the pie through your own organization. As far as the comment about putting employees first, and when you invest in employees, you invest in your community. In Fullerton, over 70% of our general fund goes to salaries and pensions, and our city is falling apart. This council, actually, the last council technically tried to raise taxes on us because all of our money goes to people and not to services and not to actually benefit the community. So the idea that he's a huge booster for ASME and other local unions tells me that he's actually not a huge booster for the people of Fullerton. The idea that he actually saved us money on water should sort of be ignored by this council because this council raised our water rates. So that clearly isn't a priority for anybody, but I would probably say, Mayor Whitaker and Nick Dunlap, I'm sure you two are against water rate hikes and screwing people for money, but I can't say that for the rest of the council. It's yet to be seen from, from a couple of members, and it's absolutely not true for Zara and Silva. But back to the lobbying and the cronyism. We need somebody in every board position, in every position in general, that puts the people of Fullerton first and isn't self-dealing. We finally got Mayor Fitzgerald, the lobbying mayor, off of our council. Let's, let's do that with everything. Let's make sure the people actually have our interests at heart and not their own. Because even, even if it's a glorious nonprofit, and he makes no money, and it's all for the grace and privilege of the people of Fullerton, it still looks like self-dealing. It still looks like grifting. It still looks really bad. And we need to put an end to it. Put somebody in this position who doesn't have a conflict of interest and isn't trying to rally the support of people who don't live in and don't serve in our community to represent us. I would say pick pretty much anybody else who wants this position on council. And thank you. Have a good day.
Next commenter, please.
Ellen Mackey?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, I want to disagree with the previous speaker. He sounds a little bit unhinged and unstable. Good evening, Mayor Whitaker and council members. My name is Ellen Mackey. I'm an ecologist and Chair of the ASME Local 1902 Women's Caucus. The Women's Caucus is bringing forward the allegations of sexual harassment, retaliation, and assault to management, and if need be, to Operations Personnel and Technology Board Committee at Metropolitan. We are voicing our support for Adon Ortega as your representative to the MWD Board because he has a documented track record as a voice for working families and employees. Adon has stated for the record that employees should not face intimidation or retaliation for reporting misconduct and abuse. Rather, the issue should be investigated through an independent outside consultant, a transparent process holding those responsible accountable, regardless of their employment position or standing. Adon has openly advocated for improving housing conditions for our desert employees living in substandard housing. Adon has supported a review of our apprenticeship program, where 60% of our tradeswomen have filed formal complaints of harassment and retaliation. In addition, Adon is a former employee of Metropolitan, which provides him a working knowledge of agency functioning from within the agency. So if our engineering department presents data that is at best optimistic or when a manager reports that a recent accident at a pump plant is a rare occurrence, Adon knows when to look deeper because he understands life on the inside. As you know from your position, serving the public, asking questions does not always make you popular, but that's what public service is all about. This is why the Women's Caucus supports Director Ortega, because he is informed, he is interactive. He seeks answers to questions that our ratepayers, including residents of Fullerton, want to know. We need Adon Ortega's voice on the MWD Board. And I'd like to also add that I'm pretty sure that for our employee, desert employees living in substandard housing in the desert and having to tolerate unlivable conditions because that's the slum housing that they're living in, but they're the ones that keep the water flowing to all of our ratepayers, including Fullerton. Thank you.
Jolene Dipmar? Jolene, please unmute.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening, Ms. Dipmar. Could you increase the volume? I don't, closer to your microphone, perhaps?
Okay. Is that better? Oh, there's like a million echoes.
Jolene, if you have another volume, can you turn it down, please? If you're watching this on your computer or tablet? Oh, I think she left the meeting. No more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I hate to cut her off on this. You don't expect her to try again, do you?
How about I read the ecomments and maybe, I'm sorry, I don't remember her last name, Jolene, we'll call back in and we can get her back in at the end?
Ms. Dipmar, yes.
There's another Zoom comment there, isn't there?
Oh, someone else has just raised their hand last minute. This will be the last one, last call for comments on this item, please. Christopher Duarte?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm a, as a Fullerton resident, just listening to all the public comments and the discussion before, I, I would like the, the council to, I support the reaffirmation of Adam Ortega, just listening to everything. It feels like he's right for what, he's the right person for Fullerton and, and the workers, which are two, you know, are two big issues. They're two big items, in my personal opinion. I just want to take the time to, to voice my support as a Fullerton resident. Thank you.
Okay, with that, no more speakers on Zoom.
Okay, we'll bring the discussion back to the council.
Would you like the ecomments now before you do, at that point?
I, yeah, I thought we had our quota of ecomments on other items.
You've heard from me so much tonight. I apologize. There are only eight.
Right. I apologize too. We do want to hear from these.
Yes. Guest user, this guy is clearly racist. He should not be allowed to represent our city. Guest user, holy smokes, the city's representative to Metropolitan Water is a big old racist. If he's willing to say elected white representatives can't vote on a matter because of their skin color while being recorded, how much worse is the garbage, he says, when he isn't being recorded, his trash attitude contaminates the water we all have to drink. Guest user, Fullerton council members, I just listened to Fullerton's Metropolitan Water District Director Adon Ortega on a January 27th meeting say that white directors lawfully voted in by their districts should not be able to disagree with other. should not be able to disagree with other directors who are Latino or black. I'm appalled and do not want this racist man representing our district. Please remove him right away. Guest user, Mr. Mayor and council members, it is a not-so-hidden secret that Fullerton's current Metropolitan Water Director Adon Ortega is a bigot. He has continuously rejected the concept of an even playing field in favor of only supporting Latinos. I respectfully request you consider replacing him as our director. Guest user, to quote Adon Ortega, finally, as a Latino and Latino-majority board, you ought to ask yourselves if it is right to let white people representing Pasadena, Sierra Madre, Foothill, and La Cañada to choose the winner when people of color on the MWD Board disagreed. If you choose this path, then nothing has changed in the empowerment of Latinos, Latinas, African-Americans, and women, and we are inviting more injustice. This naked racism, and it has no place in Fullerton or elsewhere. Guest user, Adon Ortega quite literally works in the water business, and having him represent our city on this board smells of both regulatory capture and a conflict of interest. We need somebody conflict-free who represents Fullerton's interests and Fullerton's interests alone, appointed to this and all boards. Guest user, considering that the Metropolitan Water District Board is already Latino, Latina, Latino, Latina majority, and since Fullerton has both Korean and Syrian council members, as well as Hispanic and white, it is time for Fullerton to embrace our diverse strength and nominate somebody who isn't just a color other than white, but a truly diverse face who can also represent people of non-Hispanic color. Guest user, as a Latinx individual, I support Adon Ortega for the Water District Board of Directors because, like he stated last week at the Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District Meeting, we need more diversity, and by diversity, we mean anything but straight and white. And those are all the ecomments on this item.
Did Ms., the other caller come back on?
Sorry, Mayor, I jumped in the gun.
No, I appreciate the help, sure.
She did, I do see her. Jolene Dipmar.
Hello.
Hello, hello, hello.
Jolene, you still have some feedback issues. Make sure your volume is turned down.
Okay, is that better?
No.
No, I'm sorry, ma'am.
All right, I.
Apologies.
Support or oppose?
Hello?
Oh, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, gosh, thank you, okay. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and stakeholders. As both a resident of Fullerton and employee of Metropolitan, I formally request that Director Ortega remain on the MWD Board of Directors to ensure that Metropolitan works toward an equitable professional environment, to ensure that Fullerton residents have a stable water rates, and that we all have a voice. Thank you for your time. Sorry for the issues.
Thank you for your persistence. We're glad to hear from you.
Mr. Mayor, I did close the comment section, but we do have one more. Would you like to take it?
Sure, excellent.
Jayden. Jayden, you are unmuted, but we cannot hear you. With that, we'll close it.
Okay, we will bring this back to the council. Any comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may. You know, I'll address this, number one, the water issue. You know, by all the comments and what's going on. And just to address the last few issues, prior to Mr. Ortega, I mean, if we're going to get into this Latino-white representation.
I'd prefer that we don't.
Okay, then, well, he, all right, we won't. But then I would say that since my knowledge of the water and the city, Mr. Ortega has done the most for Fullerton of all the reps that I have known and spoken with. I know that on the water rate issue, I know that MODOC, our Orange County Water Department, that's part of the MED, some of their MED representatives were voting for that pay increase, and Mr. Ortega was able to convince the majority of the board to lower that increase while our South County counterparts were advocating for a rate increase. So I can appreciate that. And we did have that issue that someone mentioned that the Commissioner Ackerman from the MED, from the MODOC and MED, was advocating against Mr. Ortega when he had been asked to possibly run for Chair of the Board. And so we had those influences coming up. But on that note, I can appreciate any council member wanting to be on that MED. I mean, I would support that. That's not the issue. The issue would be is if, like, he made a comment, and maybe we can take him up on it, and we can allow him to remain on there till June. We can bring this back, and then at that point, when some of these projects that he has been working on and been an integral part of get resolved, we can appoint one of us, and then kind of start it with a fresh start. It would seem to me, going in there right now with all this going on, I mean, we could all get up to speed, but I think having him there while this is going on would just be beneficial for Fullerton and the ratepayers of Southern California. So again, I wouldn't oppose a councilman wanting to be on that, but I would ask that we could maybe hold off on that until June when some of his projects get done.
I certainly appreciate Director Ortega's service to our city and thank him for his commitment to represent us accordingly. On the issue of time commitment, I don't want to speak for anyone else on the council, but I think it's comical to think that not any of us here don't understand the time commitment, what it is to serve in the public. We all go into this and venture into this, understanding what little time we'll have. That being said, I do agree with our mayor, so long as an elected representative of our city and our citizens is willing to serve, they should always take priority. And that I defer to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
You know, again, I agree. I think it's, this is something, this is a position that should be held by a council member. And so that's what I'm prepared to support. If there's, I think, anyone up here that is interested in serving, I think you should express that interest, and we can discuss and deliberate on that tonight.
Councilmember Zabra.
There is no legal requirement for a council member to serve. I think anyone from the general public, resident of Fulton, if they are capable and willing, then they should be afforded the same rights as anyone up here to serve on any of these boards. I have had the privilege for the last two years to work closely with Mr. Ortega, and he certainly is more than capable. He has an impeccable reputation in the water industry, and he has served Fullerton in ways that others haven't before him. He has saved Fullerton millions of dollars in water costs and also Orange County in general. He's been a very strong advocate for transparency and fairness, and any of these accusations against him are just political fodder. So I don't see any reason why we should disrupt a four-year term that he was appointed to just for, on a whim, or a matter of opinion. Although I think, you know, who knows what lies behind all of this. I will not support other members taking this, and I'd like to have Mr. Ortega continue for the entire term.
Okay, well, with that, I would, unless there's anything further, I would ask this body for any nominees for this post.
I nominate Mr. Adon Ortega to continue his term.
And I would second that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
Judging by the seriousness of the allegations that Mr. Ortega says the current Water District and its operators are under, I would certainly be more partial to a city council member who is directly responsible to the voters, and there's a direct recourse from our voting public to that council person. I'd be interested in serving as a result.
So then I guess I'll nominate Councilmember Jung.
We have a motion to second on the floor right now.
Okay.
Right.
Well, if I may, Mr. Mayor, you know, before we go with that, Mr. Jung, I could support your nomination. Again, I would just like to have Mr. Ortega finish off some of those projects, and maybe you could, we can nominate you and get you in, and you can start in June when some of his projects are done. And that'll give you time maybe to work with him to get, you know, shorten that curve. Like I said, I'm not opposed to having a council member at the MED. That's fine, but to hear and and seeing what's going on over there, I would just like to have, give him the courtesy of finishing some of the projects he has been heavily involved in. So, Mr. Jung, if you would accept that, I mean, we can move on and nominate you, and you can start in June.
I certainly appreciate your logic behind that, sir. And it certainly is not lost on me. However, I do feel there, hit the ground running is always my viewpoint. If there's accountability here in council, there's a council member that wants to take on that responsibility, I certainly think that should be afforded to him or her, him in this case, because we're all gentlemen up here.
Okay, with that, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. So that, the first vote would be on retaining the current director, the occupant at MWD, Mr. Ortega. All those in favor, or is this a roll-call vote?
We should do roll-call, just because we're partially on Zoom. So, Councilmember Jung.
No.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dunlap.
No.
And Mayor Whitaker.
No.
Motion fails three to two.
So with that, I would accept any other motions.
I will nominate Councilmember Jung.
Mr. Duffey, could you also include in your motion the removal of Mr. Ortega as the representative?
Yeah, two steps, yes.
Sure, okay. Well, I'd move to remove Director Ortega and appoint Councilmember Fred Jung.
Thank you.
I second that nomination. And Madam Clerk, we'll entertain a roll-call.
Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
No.
Mayor Protem Dunlap.
Aye.
And Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Motion passes four to one.
We do honor good service, and I appreciate the nice comments that were made by Mr. Ortega, and certainly wish him well.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would ask that maybe you can present, on behalf of the city, a certificate of recognition to Mr. Ortega for his service at the next council meeting.
Certainly, for time served, that would be appropriate.
And you also have two more committees under this item.
Oh, yes, I'm not finished on this one yet.
Nope.
So the Independent Cities Risk Management Association. Could you explain this one, please?
Yes, council directed staff to find out if an elected official could sit on the ICRA Board, and indeed, an elected official can sit on that board. Staff would like to add the caveat that cities generally appoint staff to this board to serve. Due to the length of the meetings and the technical complexity of the subject matter, that being said, council is asked to appoint a primary alternate to the Independent Cities Risk Management Board, Risk Management Authority Board.
Okay, any comments by council members on this action?
Are we appointing somebody? Do we have names, or?
You have no names. Councilmember Jung had thrown himself into the ring for this position at the last meeting. I'm not sure if he's still interested, or if he'd like to put a staff member in.
Who's currently serving that position?
Who's currently there? I believe it is the Administrative Services Director. Who's moved to the primary representative now. So, so really, it's vacant.
I have a quick, just a quick question on this item. Is this not a highly technical position in which usually it's a staff member that serves on it?
That is my understanding, but their bylaws do not prohibit an elected official serving on it. And this is for the alternate, primary alternate's position. We have Deputy City Manager is the primary on there right now, and the secondary alternate is our Risk Manager.
So this is for a first alternate?
Yes.
Would it not be more prudent for us to elevate the second alternate to first alternate and then have the second alternate be the position that we nominate tonight? Because, just because of the fact that this is a highly technical position, and it's normal practice for staff to be on this?
I have no issues with that, councilman. I would concur.
As far as the elevation of the existing alternate, that one step, but we would still have a vacancy, right?
Correct, and that case would then be for the second alternate.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, members of council, if I would be willing to serve as the third alternate at this point, it would be behind the Deputy City Manager, who is overseeing our Risk Manager operations, and then the Risk Manager, and then the City Manager at that point, just to fill that position. I don't know if we've ever sent the third alternate, but just to provide coverage, that's fine. I would support that.
Yeah, I would make the motion for that.
Yes, please.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, I move to, gosh, now you're going to make me think of three, so.
Just follow the city manager's recommendation.
Okay, I move to follow the city manager's recommendation. Thank you.
I will second.
Okay, motion has been seconded. If there's nothing further, please, the roll-call vote.
Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dunlap.
Aye.
And Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, and there is one more on your list, and then you can be done with this item.
The Santa Ana River Flood Protection Agency, we had a little bit of a snafu at our last session, and it requires adjustment here. I was appointed as the alternate representative when I already occupied the primary representative role. So that being the case, we require an alternate?
An alternate, correct.
So if there is any interest of any of the council here to serve as alternate, please speak up.
Sure, I'll serve as the alternate.
Okay, Mayor Protem has an interest in serving as alternate?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Thought you might have wanted to become the third alternate.
Okay, move down seconded.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Can we get a second?
Oh.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
And with that, if there are no other nominees, please, the roll-call.
Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dunlap.
Aye.
Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Unanimously passes. And that is it for this item.
All right. With that, does the council require a break at this time, or should we proceed to the consent items?
Go consent.
I guess we have a split decision on that one. We can take a couple of minutes on this. Madam Clerk, have there been any requests to pull consent items by the public?
I do not have, and then quickly, excuse me, not a request to pull, but I do have a public comment on number four, which I could read now. And it's from Jose Trinidad Castaneda. This program will help our local businesses that have been serving us residents for years. I have been a huge fan of Fullerton beloved restaurants like Monkey Business and Green Bliss Cafe, who need the city's help through this program. Thank you for supporting businesses when voting in favor of launching a sustainable business certification program and appropriation. And that's the only comment on public, what are we on, consent calendar that I have?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
I'd move the consent calendar item. However, I would like to ask if, I know that we have the CAFR report. These are very elaborate reports, and very technical and complicated. However, they are extremely important, and I'm, I would love to see our staff, our city manager, put together maybe a short, easy to understand summary for public consumption, so that we can, you know, share it on social media, on our city website, and so that allows the public to understand a little bit better on what these are, and the audit that happens on our finances.
I understand what you're saying, and normally, I would be one to want to pull this item to discuss. But I do receive from members of this council often frustration that these meetings go on till very late in the evening. So, I'd be happy to leave this on consent and not pull it. But even though, as you characterize them as, you know, detailed and technical, and, you know, this is really a lot of the core of what we do, what the council does here. So, I would, I would certainly agree to allow it to go on consent here, but we will be visiting it back very shortly in many respects. And with all our budget talks, I believe that this is the important snapshot of the last full year that we have data for. And it is important that we master this, all members of the council. Communicating it to the public, simply, that's something that we all need to do. We need to translate for those who are less involved in the details here. So, with that.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I can, real quickly on that, yeah, we do have a study session on finances coming up. We can go over the fiscal year ending 2020. Also, the CAFR is an accountant's dream and a layperson's nightmare at times. For that reason, we also push out what's called a popular annual financial report, or we shorten that up even to just calling it the community report. That is currently on our website right now, under our financial report section. That is a 12-page version of the CAFR, and it has more graphics, more understanding graphs, and more explanation. And it tries to take that, the CAFR, and put it into layperson terms. So, I would direct people to our financial website on that. And after the meeting tonight, we will make sure that this is distributed to the city council members in its PDF form, so that you can push that out. That was just completed, I believe it was yesterday, and put out onto the internet, so. Is, you know, is the, is that study session agendized already? I believe that we're looking forward to it on February 9th, so a week from today. So. Well, in that case, if there, I would, I would second that motion.
Right, I believe that study sessions have their place, but very often, it is important that these items see the light of day at council meetings as well. For those, you know, out there who would like to at least begin to get an understanding of the city finances, I hear that expressed much more frequently than in the past, because so many people are concerned about the state of our infrastructure currently. And they're, they're willing and they want to get hands-on on that. So, I see Councilmember Silva has returned, and we're looking to, to move the consent items at this point. We do have a motion, and was that seconded?
Yeah, seconded.
Okay. So, a roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunlap.
Aye.
Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
And we will now proceed to our, to our first discussion item this evening. That would be item number nine. This item was agendized at my request, and it's important, I believe, at this juncture, to have an open discussion regarding the status of the Fullerton Museum, and what proposals might be for future museum operations. And I did speak with, I was asked to speak in a virtual meeting with the board, with the museum board, and they expressed a number of different concerns. I would try to relate some of those as this discussion goes forward. But I don't know whether other council members have had that experience and have any particular questions at this time.
I've had some meetings with our, with the associate board, the museum board, and I'm looking forward just to this, this presentation, to see what update there are. I know the community is very eager to, to get the museum up and running again. I know there's a lot of challenges, but I know where there's a will, there is a way. And so, I hope we can find that way as we move forward with this discussion.
Okay, and, Mr. City Manager, you provided some of the background or detail, but I think also what we want to know is, is exactly where we stand, at least in terms of the council being able to relate or communicate what direction we're heading in.
Clearly, and, Mr. Mayor, members of council, tonight is part of that time to give direction to staff on this issue. Hopefully, the staff report has a lot of the background, how we kind of got to the where we're at. And again, just to reiterate a little bit, had COVID not kind of stricken the entire world at this point, the goal was to come forward to the city council last year with a museum master plan, to look at the museum and how we can bolster it, actually. And reviewing the financials and the staffing of the museum, it is city staff. It's not the Museum Association that is staffing it at the time, prior to the pandemic and shutting it down. So, as everybody knows, we had to lay off a lot of staff. We did take the staff that were dedicated to the museum and have moved some of them to other functions within Parks and Rec. But right now, the museum is closed. Now that we're back open and not on the stay-at-home, prior to the stay-at-home being implemented, we are trying to see if we could have a once-a-weekend type approach, also with the Thursday night market, to have access there. And so, we'll look back at doing that for the remainder of this year. But going forward, we really need to look and partner with the Fullerton Museum Association, and hopefully, another third party, to enhance the museum, to make sure that it is always open, and quite frankly, to make sure that it's not dependent upon the city's financial condition, which is not getting any better. And so, in the agreement with the Museum Association, it does have that the council, in the budget process, allocates funds, and the Museum Association can supplement funds above those. There is some issues about sharing of the ticket revenue and the memberships. And quite frankly, that comes into the city for about $40,000 of revenue. That's something that, in the future, the Museum Association, or whoever's operating it, should have the full admissions and the full memberships. But we have to do something differently in order to make sure that the museum is a longstanding asset. So, absent the ability to go forward, and we did apply for a grant to, through some of the initial CARES Act funding that were made eligible, we did not get it because of the amount of subscription to that grant process. That would have helped us with the master plan. But where we're at right now is looking at potential partners to come in, and partners that would be here in the city. So, what we naturally look at is Fullerton College, Cal State Fullerton. I have had discussions with Cal State Fullerton, because they do have an art department, to inquire with them as to, hey, is there some way that you could help us with the museum operations? Cal State Fullerton did partner down in Santa Ana with what's called the Grand Central Art Station, I believe it is. And it is, they successfully helped save that and make it as an anchor in downtown Santa Ana for their art area. That's what we want to achieve. We want to bolster that area that is around the museum and around Museum Plaza, and enhance the museum operations. So, but we do have difficulty, because we don't have the resources. So, hopefully, by going out, either through an RFP, or just putting out the information that, hey, we need a third-party partner, much like what we're doing at the Hunt Branch Library, we can bring in somebody to work with us, and most importantly, the Museum Association. This is not to replace them, it is not to freeze them out. It is to get a, another leg to what is a three-legged stool to prop up the museum, the city, the Museum Association, and we need a third-party partner to help us. So, look forward to any discussion and any direction as to go forward. But the goal is to get the museum open, and to make it financially viable, and to keep it as a true resource and asset. Do want to add that there's a couple things that in reviewing a lot of things, there was some ownership of the museum center itself, and what is the Ben Franklin House. So, it seems that back in 1973 or so, maybe even starting in '72, the city was looking to sell some of its assets, some of its properties. So, in looking at the records and the minutes from meetings, the city started working with the Fullerton Museum Association, I believe prior to that, they had a different name, to enter into a lease-to-purchase of the property. So, the Museum Association was going to pay $15,000 a year, and after 10 years, there would be an option to purchase the museum property. It is the former city library, and at that time, it was going with the Pomona Street Library name. In 1974, the Museum Association president at that time came to the city council to say that they were having problems with their federal tax-exempt status, trying to get it. So, the North Orange County Community College District had volunteered to help them, but, and they would pay the $15,000 a year. But the deal at the time was that they would also receive the option to purchase the property if they made all the payments. So, the city council on a 5-0 vote approved that agreement. 1975, the city entered into a lease-to-purchase agreement, and then also an operating agreement, and then a lease-back purchase, or lease-back agreement with the Community College District. Flash forward till 1982, and again, this is a time, it's easier now, because I can go on to a digital, I can search keywords through the city's document archives that are available online through the website. Back then, we didn't have that. So, there was a 1982 staff report that talked about, in 1974, the city sold the property. In 1984, when that 10-year agreement was coming to a lapse, it seemed like there was an assumption that the city had already sold the property to the Community College District. But there is no transfer deeds, titles, the title report shows the city is still the owner. And so, there's still some of that issue that is kind of a cloud over this entire issue that we want to settle, and we have reached out to Fullerton College about it. But I think that the intent back from the early '70s was truly to sell it. There was a lease-to-purchase, but that option was never exercised, and it's been retained as a city asset ever since. But we do need to finalize that completely and make sure that is truly the case. And that goes for both properties, the museum center property and what's called the Ben Franklin House adjacent to it, so.
Mr. City Manager, a few comments, and really, you know, I think you look at the city of Fullerton, you know, the museum center for me is one of the cultural gems of our community. And, you know, I want to be very clear, I support funding, I support reopening, and I support collaboration with the museum center's board. You know, not unlike Mayor Whitaker, I had the opportunity to participate in a conversation with, you know, approximately 15 to 20, you know, board members last week. And I was very frustrated to hear, you know, the way that they have been treated, or the way that they've described being treated, you know, the entirety of the pandemic. You know, not only have they been physically locked out of the facilities, they've literally been locked out of these processes where there are really important decisions being made about exploring, you know, kind of the future of the museum center, and they're not even at the table. You know, they actually heard, third person through Cal State Fullerton, that Cal State Fullerton had gone over to the site and had, I guess, taken a tour of some kind. And so, this is getting back to them kind of through the grapevine. And I would certainly expect much better communication to, you know, anybody, you know, that's, that's conducting business or deliberating on behalf of the city. I just, I think that's completely unacceptable, and I absolutely think that we need to move forward, I think, in a, in a much better fashion. And I think that starts with, you know, with good communication, you know, with trust and transparency. And I think that absolutely requires us, as a city, to be much more collaborative with their board. And I guess, they've expressed some concerns about not even being able to get in to access, you know, the payables that they have to pay vendors. They've expressed concerns about not being able to get in to conduct inventory and other important work that needs to be done. And, you know, they've had, you know, been, you know, that they haven't either been entrusted with keys. They've had limited access or difficulty gaining access. And I just cannot understand why we, as a city, it seems like we just are constantly an impediment to, you know, some of these important, and in some cases, routine processes that occur. And so, you know, I found it very disturbing, very frustrating. And again, I think the Fullerton Museum Center is absolutely important to, you know, to our, to our community. We need to get it reopened. And I think we need to bring the museum center, and I believe there are people waiting to speak tonight. And, you know, my hope would be that they would not only, you know, share their frustrations, but also share some of the ideas that they have towards working towards, I think, solutions that can, that can help us here.
And Mayor Pro Tem, I appreciate that, you know, the fact that people felt they were locked out of the facility was brought to my attention a couple weeks ago. I've talked to staff about that. You know, we've had changes in the department, we've also had some leaves because of staff going out on maternity leave and things like that. So, I think there were some holes that weren't filled, but they should always have access. And I believe, you know, we've had staff in the building, and so, somebody's always been in the building, and there should be no reason why any member of the Museum Association should not have been able to get in and conduct an inventory, or to do anything else like that. So, you know, yes, we can do better on that, and I don't know why exactly that occurred. But we'll definitely make sure that's, going forward, is not the case. And I hope that they are, you know, I, we can only improve our communication with them, you're absolutely correct. I don't disagree that, in fact, I emphatically agree that it is a jewel, and we need to do something to make sure that it has a very viable future, improminent future. And I think we'll get there. COVID has been an extremely rough trip, because it hit museums and our community centers hard with all the social distance and the gathering prohibitions. So, yes, I understand.
Well, I'd like to convey also that I had received many of the same complaints and issues, and I appreciate the apology that, that this happened, it shouldn't have happened. But what was conveyed to me is this was of long duration, over a long period of time, that this persisted. And so, the fact that it shouldn't have happened, at least under the circumstances you've outlined, it's problematic to me that it could happen for weeks and weeks. And with them also reflecting that they weren't getting an answer back when they, when they made inquiries about this. And so, that, that too is troublesome to me. I agree with what the Mayor Pro Tem said in terms of trying to find a way to support operations there. I know, I noted that about half a million dollars a year was withdrawn from the efforts there. And it will be a budgetary item for us, I'm sure, to consider. And it's one of those priorities that I think we need to juggle and weigh against other priorities and help make that determination. But I do believe the council has a role in being kept up to date on any negotiations that are going on, or any outside parties. So, we do need to receive a regular report if those meetings are occurring in terms of, of the nature of those meetings and what's been decided, or what direction is being recommended. Anything else from other council members on this? Okay, that's the important thing, and the reason I felt this was important to agendize, was to help to provide some. was to help to provide some direction. And on this, what I would do is ask the Mayor Protim there that the direction that he's provided, it wouldn't need to be a formal vote on this, obviously, but if we have concurrence from other members of the council, then...
Are we going to hear from the public first?
Oh, yes, thank you. Getting ahead of myself. What inquiries do we have here? What questions?
We have 20 ecomments on this item, and I can quickly go through those if you like.
You are very quick at that, yes.
Getting quicker every time. Carol Henke, please refund the Fullerton Museum Center. When the museum was defunded, it was called temporary. The museum is an important institution anchoring the downtown and should be refunded. Understanding that it must be less during this difficult time. As a Fullerton Museum Center Association board member, I believe there is no basis for essentially locking the board out, making it impossible for us to plan for reopening. As a taxpayer, this is what I want to support, not more expensive policing. Guest user says, we cannot submit our comments, but their comment is in here. Guest user, I grew up in Fullerton. I remember when the Fullerton Museum Center housed the library. I enjoyed attending FMC events and feel that FMC is a vital part of the downtown community. I urge the city council to continue to support the FMC. Guest user, the FMC is a community treasure. We are fortunate to have our own museum where families and school groups can learn more about the arts as well as our city's Fender guitar history. Please fully support this long-established cultural institution so that its gifted staff can continue to provide the top-notch exhibits and programs that make our city shine. Please do the right thing because it's the right thing to do for the museum center and all of us who rely on it. Guest user, Fullerton can be a boring L.A. suburb, or it can be, have an identity of its own. The FMC helps set Fullerton apart from the other nameless cities in North Orange County. Fullerton can be like the city of Orange with its charming downtown and the soaring property values of all the craftsmen's homes that surround the downtown. The FMC is right to feature Leo Fender and the history of the Fender history, of Fender factory that has Fullerton known worldwide because of the genius of one humble tinkerer. Marcia Taborga, as FMC members, we enjoy the irreplaceable offerings of the FMC. As new Fullerton residents, over a decade ago, I recall feeling nervous when my young kids wanted to go in and then so pleasantly surprised by the warm, welcoming atmosphere. Over the years, we enjoyed exhibits, events, running into others and discussing art or catching up. FMC nurtures thinking and is a place where diverse people can enjoy and feel joy and belonging together. We need the FMC now more than ever. Guest user, we wish to convey to the city council our earnest recommendations that you do all you can to support the Fullerton Museum Center. We support, we have lived in Fullerton 55 years and cherish them all, especially those times when we visited the gift shop and those seeing a movie there and enjoying events on the patio. Please do all you can to keep the museum flourishing. Guest user, the Fullerton Museum is a staple in our community. The museum offers so much art classes. It brings art from around the world to Fullerton. It brings culture and community to our amazing city. The farmer's market and the museum are what make our city special. If we can open bars and nail salons, we should be able to make this amazing place work. My children have gone to their workshops throughout the pandemic. We have picked up their awesome art kits. Please save this amazing space. Julie Vandergrift, we need to keep our museum open. It is a huge part of our community. They have wonderful exhibits and programs. The museum pulls our community together. Please continue to support the museum. Guest user, sure would like my job back at the museum center. Let's make this community gem come back to life. Guest user, I support the Fullerton Museum Center, and I want the city council to protect it economically by keeping it open under city jurisdiction. The former employees of the FMC who were laid off should be given their jobs back since they have decades of experience between them. The FMC is a beloved cultural institution in our Fullerton community, and I'm sorely disappointed that the city council is not funding it and instead giving more than half of our taxpayer money to support the police department. Christina Garner, I urge the city council to restore support for the Fullerton Museum Center. Its historic building, its visionary programs, its small, dedicated staff, and its weekly beer garden created a vibrant, beating heart for the city. As a museum docent, I could show young schoolchildren live tarantulas. As a high school teacher, I could share original photos of Frida Kahlo with Spanish students. The closure of the museum has deprived the city's population of an invaluable local resource. Guest user, the Fullerton Museum Center is a terrific community asset and should be maintained. The programs the museum puts on both during COVID and in normal times are wonderful and allow the community to be part of the museum and experience a variety of interests presented. John Orr, for me, the FMC is a crucial institution for the city of Fullerton, contributes to education and enlightenment, entertainment, and conviviality of our people, puts Fullerton on the map with music lovers around the world. I urge you to find the money to keep it going and growing. Rhonda Gothrop, I totally support the Fullerton Museum Center. I've gone there since I was in college and always enjoyed the exhibitions presented there. I have taken guests from out of town. The museum is an important cultural heritage of the city of Fullerton. The building is beautiful, and the exhibitions offer a great learning experience for all residents of Fullerton and beyond. Art and culture is what makes a society great. The city needs to continue to support the city of Fullerton. Linda Saslow, I have been a docent in FMC since 2008. I have witnessed the creative learning for the K-12 set and senior citizens alike within FMC's walls. The employees are true resources for our city. The exhibits curated by the museum itself are thoughtful, delightful, and intelligent. I would like DTF to continue to have this cultural hub. I, I hope there is a day when things are even better at FMC, and I can docent there once again. Guest user, the Fullerton Museum is a hard, a huge part of the Fullerton culture. The exhibits are well-liked and attended. The children's program are also very good. We need this in our community as we connect with each other. Please support the reopening of our museum. Kathy Campanelli, the FMC has made a powerful cultural influence on the community of Fullerton for nearly 50 years. The diverse exhibits and functions held there cannot be forgotten nor should they be discontinued. I've been a docent doing airport tours for elementary students, raising an awareness of the importance and influence of our small airport and museum house in Orange County. I ask that the city council work with the FMCA Board of Trustees to develop a plan to keep this treasure open. Thank you. I grew, oh, guest user, I grew up in Woodyer Uptown, and Fullerton has always reminded me of the old style with your heritage. Fullerton has such a great heritage, and museum reminds the citizens in having schools bring their children there for field trips and having visitors to the city hall visit museum shares a great heritage that Fullerton has. The city has seen much progress over the years and has a rich history, culture, and diversity. The museum is a great resource for our schools and the community. And one more comment from Don Lagerberg in Yorberlinda. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I hope in these challenging times that you will be able to sustain the Fullerton Museum. Until recently, I regularly met out-of-town friends and family there and dined in the downtown area. Is a great family-oriented cultural resource and a magnet for the downtown business community. And that is from a longtime member and supporter, Don Lagerberg. And those are all the ecomments, and I believe there are Zoom comments.
Yes, just a reminder to those calling in or on the computer. If you wish to speak via telephone, please press star nine to notify us that you would like to speak. And if you are on Zoom, please utilize the raise hand feature now to be on the roll. We will start with Janet Buzan.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, mayor and council members. On behalf of the Fullerton Museum Center Association Board of Trustees, we are pleased to be on the agenda this evening. As stated in the letter sent on January 5th to each council member, the city and the Museum Association Board have had an ongoing contractual relationship since the 1980s. I speak for the board in stating that we are proud of our valued partnership and our contribution to both the city and the people of Fullerton. We have had decades of an excellent relationship and partnership with city council. Our partnership has created an award-winning institution, programming for thousands of citizens each year, and established the museum as the city's critical asset downtown. The work of the Board of Trustees includes selecting and paying for exhibit costs, related educational programs, paying for Leo Fender gallery exhibits and collection pieces, operating docent programs that offer the museum's tour programs, selecting and recommending public art for the city, producing and operating the Fullerton Market Beer and Wine Garden, and much more. On average, the association raises over $250,000 annually, and these funds go directly toward museum operations. We specifically wish to thank Mayor Whitaker and Mayor Protim Dunlap for individually meeting with the board these past weeks. We look forward to hearing from council about the future of the museum. We are willing to work with you to develop a strategy that will lead to the successful reopening of the museum. We understand the financial crisis and, as in past crises, have worked as partners during financially difficult times. We seek policy direction and a reasonable timeline to prepare for the future, a future that we are convinced can see the museum continue in its critical role as the cultural, economic, educational, and social vitality of our city. And finally, in closing, thank you again, mayor and Mayor Protim, for your comments about transparency. We look forward to working with you. Thank you very much.
Christine Buzan?
Hey, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, cool. So first of all, I'm getting some texts from people that their comments weren't read, and they're mad. So maybe double-check and make sure all the ecomments were read. Um, but anyway, so I'll go on to my part. So hello, everyone. I wanted to say, state again, just like Janet Buzan, the other Buzan said, um, thank you so much, Mayor Whitaker, for adding the museum to tonight's agenda. I've been volunteering for the FMC since council voted to temporarily cut funding June of last year. One of the projects I've assisted on was the FMC exhibit that took place in fall 2020. I wanted to share with you guys some quotes from a few of the submissions that accompanied the artwork from this exhibit as I feel it accurately describes the museum's importance within our community. So I'm going to read some of the quotes for you all. "FMC is a staple of the town. It is our town square, a place for the community to gather. It doesn't just hold local history, but the world history. FMC keeps the arts alive and well. FMC is essentially the heart of downtown Fullerton." Ashley C. "Through art inspiration, community education, friendships, market, music, dog days, history tours, and the list goes on, the Fullerton Museum Center is the city's pulse, bringing our community together to celebrate the exchange of ideas while being gifted with art from around the world." Emily H. "FMC is integral to the community, and the best part is that it is accessible to anyone who wants to learn history and look at public art. My favorite memory is when I first walked past the museum for the first time. I was excited because there's an awesome museum that is close to my school. It is so important to have a museum so the public can learn new things." Allison M. "I started taking art classes with Miss Amy when I was just four years old. When they asked my name, I said dude, so that's what Miss Amy called me, dude. Instead of insisting that wasn't appropriate, she honored me in my creative self. I created some incredible pieces of art at the FMC and have missed it and hope to get back to the FMC as soon as possible. They are so nice at the FMC." Evan S., five and a half years old. "I grew up in Fullerton and have visited the museum on school field trips. I recently returned to Fullerton after having lived in NYC for 15 years and have a young child. I look forward to the day she can visit the museum on a school field trip, too." Nayan Tara R. "The Fullerton Museum Center building is an emblem of the Fullerton culture and community that I've been a part of for decades. Like the subjects of this painting, it symbolizes the comforts of home. Art is necessary for life." Sarah C. "There were over 70 pieces of art submitted to this exhibition by residents and friends of the museum of all ages and walks of life. I hope you will take these words and the importance that the museum holds to so many of us into consideration as you continue to make important decisions about the future of Fullerton's beloved museum."
The next speaker is Jane Randz. If you can unmute.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I'm really grateful that the council listened to the board on this and highly disappointed, actually, tonight in one of the excuses that was made, when it was blamed on someone being on pregnancy leave. I felt was highly inappropriate and really needs an apology and recognition of how sexist that is. But moving on, I have a concern that the direction that the city's taking on all our public commons, the things that we pay property tax for gratefully, are being defunded and it's being pushed off, whether it's parks, whether it's museums, being pushed off to private entities, nonprofits being expected to be able to raise the funds from grants or the community. But those are somewhat limited resources. We can't expect to run a city on donations. And I think maybe we ought to prioritize, pick at least one thing that we want to be sure that it keeps going. And because Museum Center serves the purpose of, it's a community meeting place. It's where people gather. I made friends when I first moved here by going to the Museum Center Thursday night markets. Friends that, friendships that have lingered. And that being, it's, it's necessary for a community to be a community and have connections. And that value is really something you can't put a dollar amount on. And so as you move forward, council members in making recommendations about how you want to fund this, please prioritize at least one institution, if not two, I'd also like to put a plug into the library, to keep those things going because they're so significant to our community.
Chana?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Harmi Chana. I'm both a resident and business owner in Fullerton, and I have been for a number of years. I'm also a member of the Fullerton Museum Board of Trustees. Like the speakers before me, I want to thank Mayor Bruce Whitaker for adding this item to the agenda and also for taking the time to meet with the Board of Trustees to discuss what we feel is a very important matter. We also appreciate Mayor Protim Nick Dunlap extending the same courtesy to us, and Councilman Zara also did at some point. Mayor Whitaker and Protim Mayor Dunlap's summation of what has transpired to date is actually very accurate. Many people have also attested to the fact that the Fullerton Museum is an integral and key part of the Fullerton community and an economic driver for the city. So, you know, we have worked in partnership and helped raise funds. We, the board, feel that it is critical that we continue to operate the Fullerton Museum. And even though we still have an existing contract, we do appreciate and we do understand that the city has certain financial limitations during these tough times, the times are tough for everyone. As a business owner, I know that. The board is open to discussions on how we can keep the museum funded and running. And we welcome the council's input on reaching that goal in an open and transparent manner. We also want to continue to work on future exhibits. During the pandemic and during the shutdown, we did host several successful exhibits, and we want to be able to continue doing that. And eventually, when state law allows it to have the venues fully open, we want the museum to be ready. And that's why this matter is so pressing. Because Mayor Protim Dunlap is correct. We have not been given full access to the premises. And this was discussed on a number of occasions, not just two weeks ago, a month ago even. We were promised access, and we still don't have it. And frankly, I'm a little bit surprised to hear the comments from city staff, which many of the board members who are listening to this meeting are hearing for the very first time, despite a number of conversations with city staff and direct questions related to what their long-term's goal, what their long-term goals were, so that all of us could move forward in a good-faith effort to resolve this situation. That being said, our goal is to work with you so that the Fullerton Museum can remain a valuable and cultural asset like it has been in the community and hopefully will continue to be for many years to come. I want to thank you for giving me the time to speak and again, for putting this important matter on the agenda.
Thank you for your comments.
Paulette, if you could please unmute? Seeing no movement?
Yes, I'm here. I'm sorry. Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Paulette Chafee. I grew up in Fullerton and went to local public schools. I'm a graduate of Troy High School. I'm also a local business owner, an attorney in Fullerton. I've been very, very involved in Saving the Fox, Coyote Hills, Hunt Branch Library. I've been very, very involved in saving the Fox, Coyote Hills, Hunt Branch Library. I volunteer extensively in local charities. And one very important center in Fullerton is the Fullerton Museum Center. This center has provided extensive learning opportunities for people of all ages in our community and beyond. The Fender exhibit is just a premier, premier exhibit for this area. Prior to Christmas 2020, you closed the museum and defunded it. You have been petitioned by thousands of local residents to open it. It is vital for our community. I propose that starting Thursday, April 15th, you reopen the museum retail store and outdoor patios for Thursday, Friday, and Saturday hours. This would allow the very popular Beer Garden to return on Farmer's Market Thursdays, which provides revenue for the museum. And the retail store also provides revenue. You can't have a city going without cultural entities. Staff coverage using the current Fullerton employees that have worked at the museum for many, many years could be brought back easily for Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And it's absolutely a doable thing. Let's work together to get this done. And please work with the Fullerton Museum Board that has been ready, willing, and able to do everything possible to come to a mutual understanding for reopening this vital asset of Fullerton. Thank you.
With that, Mr. Mayor, no more speakers?
Okay, thank you, everyone, for your comments on this item. We'll bring it back to council. And this was intended to provide direction. So if there's any other message to be conveyed by council members?
Well, I know.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry.
A couple of questions. So now that the statewide lockdown is ending, so are we allowed? How many, if we open the museum tomorrow, how many would be allowed to be in there, I guess, the question?
Zero. Right now, we are under the most restrictive purple tier. And at museums, only outdoor items, you cannot be indoors. So, yeah, and that's one of the problems that we've been facing is that, you know, Orange County's been in a restrictive tier, combination of the staffing issue. We want to see the openings. We want to, once again, with the Thursday markets, have that as an access to raise awareness. And so we're more than happy to talk to anybody to make that happen and to hopefully get a lot of volunteers to assist with that.
Okay, all right. And then another question there. So are we still in line to do the master plan like we were looking at prior to the pandemic?
We have no money for that.
Okay, so we need to study that somehow. And then, yeah, because I am a proponent of the museum. And though I didn't meet with the board, I enjoy that place. I've been there many times. But I think we can figure out a way to bring it back, at least like Paulette said, maybe for three days a week starting in April, when maybe we can get out of the restricted, a little more restricted area and have more events. But I would also, given the council members, Zara, you're now on the board, right? I think we can expect some more feedback and information from the board directly from you to councilor to the city manager, so that would help. But I would like to see how we can figure this out because, again, all of us here hold that place to be a place of congregating and talking to friends and just making the community. So what I'd like to maybe propose is, and I know this may sound bad, but could we look to see if we can partner up with the Muckenthaler to help the museum? I know the Muckenthaler is running and they seem to be running pretty well on their own, correct? Or how much of funding do we give the Muckenthaler?
We've cut our funding to the Muckenthaler also, but they're a little bit more self-sufficient. I'd have to check into that. I know that back in the fall, based on some of the outdoor activities that the Muckenthaler was doing, I had inquired with staff about, you know, is there a way to partner with the Muckenthaler and the Museum Association? I'll have to check back. You know, we've had staffing changes. I do want to reiterate, I did not use an excuse, a maternity leave or anything like that. So I want to correct Jane completely because that's not me and that's not what I'd ever do. It's an acknowledgement that we have a lot of staffing holes. And for that reason, you know, there's not the manager over there, there's not some other key folks. So I just want to correct that on the record because that was not, she took it completely wrong and I never meant it like that. But absolutely, that's one of the directions I want to get from council is about that partnership opportunity. And whether it's with the Muckenthaler, whether it's with the Cal State Fullerton or Fullerton College, again, we need support. We cannot do it on our own. And so I see no problem in working with others to make sure that we have a stronger museum with the Museum Association. So I would love to have that direction from council so that, in fact, per the agreement that Ms. Bouzanne was talking about, the city manager should be the staff liaison to the Museum Association. That's been delegated and all that stuff. With Councilmember Zara, I will put myself back in that so I can be there so I can communicate with the Museum Association Board of Directors and be part of the meeting, so.
A couple of more things and then I'll be done, Mr. Mayor. Well, I would like to suggest, and this is for Councilmember Zara, since he's got a little experience in marketing, the annual dues for membership is, I think, we can afford more. I know I've been a member for a long time and I'm just thinking about this, I don't know if I pay my current dues. So maybe do a bit of a marketing fundraising scheme where we do a hundred dollar membership instead of the 55. I think the people that I've seen attend, many of the people that I've seen attend the functions, if we could afford the hundred dollars versus the 55 dollars, that would help. And I think Councilmembers are, will have some ideas in working with the city, working with the Museum Association to come up with some clever marketing. And then, Mayor, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you are a budget wonk. You look at the numbers and I'd like to see, I mean, with your expertise, like you said, the half a million dollars, we're going to have to figure out in the budget. And maybe if you have the time, maybe focus with the city manager, see if we can figure out how to get that half a million dollars to put staff back in there and open that up. Because we are going to have to make these hard choices with a half million, right? Where do we go? From what pod do we get that? So, I mean, it's just a suggestion. Again, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I know you're very good at numbers and budgets and if anyone can find it, it would be.
No, I'm very happy to, I'm very happy to get involved at that level. However, there were a couple expressions of concern from members of the board about the city being so, what's the right word, actually, involved and having participation on their inner discussions because there was a sense of betrayal on the part of many of the board members about the existence of such a long-term beneficial contract, an active contract, that was unilaterally not honored and withdrawn in terms of, you know, the agreements from both sides. So there was more than a small amount of distrust expressed on that. And so now I believe this is the first time we've had an active council member on that board. I believe that it's going to cause perhaps some more uneasiness. And I would look forward to hopefully making sure that things operate properly. So I do, I'm just sharing that only for the benefit of both of you if you're going to become more embedded in what's going on there.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, on that, we know that from historically, the city has some agreements that need to be looked at and updated and all that stuff. The, technically, I believe we were in compliance with the agreement because it says that the city council has the ability to set the budget in, to set the funding in the budget. And that's for this current fiscal year, we did. The council approved the budget that reduced the funding. But, yeah, there's other things, like if the Museum Association dues are raised, I think that instead of the 25% that the city gets, we ought to look and have the Museum Association retain all of that and the admission tickets. So there's a lot of stuff that we need to look at. And again, that's what the hope was pre-COVID, that we would have some type of transition over a couple of years, get the museum master plan going, and then look at how we can bolster the Museum Association and enhance the museum and what it brings to the community. Because the council in the past, and I'm sure this one is also in favor of it, is we're not just the arts or the education community, we also want to be the arts community, the day of music and enhancing those things. There's a lot of great things that bring people to Fullerton, and we should celebrate that. So absolutely, you know, want to work with them. And I appreciate the direction and any more that we can get on this, so.
Well, Ms. Rans, Ms. Rans had a comment that was significant to me. She said, "You can't run a city on donations." And I would add, "or grants." But perhaps in a situation like this with the museum, contributions could be most helpful. And so I applaud any efforts on behalf of Councilmember Zara and/or other volunteers to help increase the fundraising capability of the museum. I do believe in these times, as difficult as things are going to be, that should they be able to make the way financially for themselves to a larger degree, that that's a win-win all the way around. And I see members of the public who do value the arts in this city. And I think that the right approach and the right request for that aid is going to be critical. It is a tough time, but very many people step forward and are willing to help, support, and give to something they deem worthy even at these times. I guess that's what I had.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, you know, I think it's important to know, we talk about, you know, we talk about the budget issues or the budget concerns. And just in the time, you know, the duration of the pandemic, you know, the city spent, you know, over $150,000 to market a failed ballot initiative to raise taxes. And we've seen numerous other proposals for planning or projections that ultimately were not successful. But just the rough math there is we're looking at $300,000 plus. That's money that could have been spent on the museum center or allocated towards the museum center. And so, you know, kind of in the spirit of, I think, you know, Ms. Chaffee's comments, I think targeting April 15th as a potential return date to at least try three days a week, I think that's absolutely, you know, reasonable. I think it's, you know, gives us enough time that, hey, perhaps more people, you know, will get the vaccine. Numbers will continue to improve, we'll continue to see, you know, businesses and other establishments reopen. So I'd like to see us target that April 15th date. And I'd like us to be, I think, really transparent and really, you know, I think, open with some of this information amongst us here on the dais. Because, you know, Councilman Silva, you know, kind of called out or addressed some concerns about the budget and how we can, you know, kind of identify places in the budget to have that spending. Well, that's $150,000 that went down on a failed ballot initiative. And so, you know, I'm not trying to be combative, I just want us to know that, hey, when we made that decision to, you know, hey, write the check to go and educate the public, you know, that could have truly educated the public, having, you know, had it been allocated to the museum center. And so, you know, those are my comments.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, please.
Mayor Protam Donlap, the money that you're talking about is a one-time amount of money. The, what we need is sustainability for our city, a continued source of revenue. So regardless of that amount of money, we would not have, we would still be in the same situation after that money is spent. However, I am very honored to be able to serve on the, on the, on the, on the board, only to be a, hopefully, a conduit between the city and the museum center and the arts community at large. Because I think that one of the big issues that I've found is that there's a lack of communication. There's something missing here. We're not communicating properly. I know there's been a lot of finger pointing. And I think that is where, it's because there's been a breakdown in communication. And I'd like, the first and foremost is for us to start talking and really being open and honest about where we are financially, where we want to go, and how we're going to get there. And so that is, that is the first step, is really reopening these lines of communication. So that's one. Number two, I do have, as Councilmember Silva said, yes, I've worked in the arts. I've worked in marketing. And I hope that I can bring this expertise. I'm very passionate about the arts and for those who know me. And so I bring something hopefully fresh to the table and I bring some passion. I know this is an essential and a component of our community. I've never been opposed to subsidizing arts and for our local government to do such a thing on education. That is one of the essential things in our culture as humans. You know, as Churchill said, you know, what are we fighting for, right? So I think this is, this is an essential thing. I hope that, I know, I know there's a way to do this, but let's start by communicating. I'm glad we are having this discussion now. Now, I do want to ask one question about the master plan. Because I also do believe that one of the issues is that we don't have really a plan. We don't really know where we're going to go with this. So I think that this is where we need to, you know, put together some sort of plan. I know a master plan in the grants, in sort of the bureaucratic world of government tends to be more expensive. But I'm hoping maybe there could be another way of putting together something. I know that when I spoke to the museum board, I asked them about a plan, and they said they did have one. So I'm hoping maybe we can take that and use it as a template and then move forward and see if there's a way to revise this. I remember when we talked, we were talking about the budget the last time around last year. It was a very tough decision. One of the, we, but we made sure that we added a motion to keep the museum at least partially open during the time, this crisis, financial crisis and during COVID. And I think we managed to do that to a certain degree. And I'm hoping we can continue to do that until we find some sort of long-term sustainable plan. But I'd like to hear from our city manager about, you know, the cost of this master plan or maybe taking an existing one and revising it and see, you know, if this is something that is doable. But, and that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Jiang?
Well, I concur with our Mayor Protam that government works best when it's on a deadline. So I'm fine with the April date. I think that gives us plenty of time for Councilman Zara to explore, get his hands deep in this museum and get some understanding and lend his expertise accordingly. And I also would encourage the public to understand that the folks that are, that are here on this dais, when you ask us whether we support a museum or support education, it's equivalent to asking if a bear goes in the woods. That's a rhetorical yes. So absolutely, I'm in favor of that, sir. And if that's a motion on your end, I'd certainly second it.
I concur with the idea of a deadline. So we can make a formal vote on this or we can just provide that direction to the city manager at this stage? What's your preference?
I would say we provide this direction and then come back to us in March and see how we're doing. And then that'll give everyone time to, like I said, figure out. But I do want to hear if what Mr. Zara is accurate, that we, can we take that past plan and modify it? Or?
I haven't seen it, so I would be open to looking at what their master plan was. And then, you know, what we're good at is when we have to do something ourselves, then we, you know, look at what others have done in different cities and then go from there. So, you know, what are the conclusions? What are some of the scope? What are some of the things that they looked at? And again, I think, you know, in combination with the Museum Association, especially if, you know, we're looking at having some type of opening, you know, we'd have to look at, again, what is the city contribution for staffing? That was the major cost. That was over about $320,000 a year. There were other things because it was a sub-program, this is getting technical, a sub-program, there were allocations and all that stuff. We can back those out, but it's still the staffing cost that's the major issue. So we're constantly looking for grants. We're working with our state and federal advocates about that. So, you know, the direction to get it open. and federal advocates about that. So, you know, the direction to get it open, our goal always has been to get it open, and to have some form of service in line with what are the current guidelines. So if by April 15th or mid-April, the ability to have just outdoor, they've had outdoor before. If we can get inside and start doing things and have the issues, and maybe we can try to get from the county health officer that, the idea of the store, because retail is allowed, but right now indoor operations at a museum's not. So what about if it's just the retail side? So things like that on a limited basis, we can start talking about.
All right, with that, receive and file on this item?
As long as I get that approval, approval of opening or closing.
I'll move to receive and file.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If it's unanimous, that's a good, as good as a roll call, right?
Aye.
Okay. I know. All right, we are at item number 10, which was submitted by the city manager. It's an update on homeless initiatives.
I believe there is, our community and economic development department, the Kelly Fritzl and/or Matt folks, will be providing a update.
Yes, Kelly is a panelist. Asking her to unmute. Kelly, if you can share your screen, you may not be able to share your video, but you should be able to share your screen.
Yeah, I just did.
Okay.
Can you, I'm going to sound like a lot of people tonight. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, yes. Are you able to share your screen?
I thought I had, so let me try again. No, I'm having problems with that.
Okay. Okay, Kelly, what I can do is I can make you a host of this meeting. I just please ask that you return those host privileges back to me. Do not leave the meeting. Kelly, try sharing your screen now.
Can you see that? I take it that is a no.
Oh, I'm seeing something.
Do we have it anywhere else?
Unfortunately, I'm not the host anymore. I can try, I can share my screen, however, I don't have the PowerPoint. City Clerk, do you have a copy? And then Kelly could speak while I move the PowerPoint.
Can you pull it up over there?
Sure, yes, if you have it here.
Kelly, while we work on that, why don't you go ahead and start talking about the homeless update? We'll catch up on the PowerPoint to you.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Tonight, we're providing a short update on homelessness. The city has been addressing homelessness for many years. Recently, the city conducted a pilot safe parking program. We opened two shelters in Placentia and Brainer Park as part of the North Service Planning Area. The city council received a homeless plan from committee report, and assisted Illumination Foundation with the opening of the Fullerton Navigation Center. With the opening of the shelters, the city worked with Judge Carter on proactive engagement, which consisted of notices that the city can enforce the anti-camping ordinance, and worked with all service providers for proactive engagement and offering of services, which assisted 150 homeless to be placed in shelters, family reunification, or provided other forms of services. With the success of this proactive engagement, the city would like to continue the momentum. The city is in the process to hire two part-time homeless case managers, one funded through CBG funds, and one will replace the former housing coordinator who has left the city. The role of the case managers will be to work with the full community, work with the county, and the continuing of care to be eligible for county housing and other services. And most importantly, to relieve our homeless police liaison officers, follow up with the clients, so they can focus on additional calls. The case managers are more cost-effective than our current provider, and working with, working for the city, their focus will be just on the city of Fullerton, our clients providing services to our residents and our businesses. So through this, and I know Mayor Whitaker actually met with the judge one or two times to help us through this process, but working with the police, we have created what we think we're calling the introduction of the HOPE Center idea, and I was hoping that the chief would be given some permissions to also join in here.
Yes, I can give him the permission. Well, actually, you are the host, so if you wouldn't mind giving him the permission, apologies, Kelly, or you can refer back to me.
My screen went dark, so I'm afraid if I touch anything, I'm going to shut the entire meeting down, which may or may not be a good thing.
I'll stop sharing. I'll see if I can, if I can get him.
I am going to jump in, and I'll just keep going, because I know that you have an item after. So the purpose of the HOPE Center, and we'll start with the background of the existing North Public Safety Task Force, and, you know, what we plan to do over the next four or five months. The Northridge County Public Safety Task Force was formed through a budget act in 2017, and it was addressing youth violence, reentry of offenders, and most importantly, the homeless outreach intervention. 10 cities were involved, and they were allocated $20 million for a four-year period, which ends this June. So HOPE, which stands for homeless outreach and proactive engagement, is a concept to augment the efforts of this, and actually to make outreach a little more focused and easier. A centralized home for the stakeholders, all the different police officers, case managers, counties, and other nonprofit providers, will create a hub of innovations, and where we can share ideas and resources, all better to serve our communities. 11. So HOPE would be, would include all of the cities that would like to be part of this, and the Northridge County Spa, the Orange County Healthcare Agency, law enforcement, homeless liaison officers, outreach workers, case managers, and medical personnel. The partners and service providers would be in this centralized location to respond, and they would use our outreach grid software. And this app-based registry will really be a good resource to send where our officers and our case managers, where the problem and the issues are being reported.
Next slide.
Next slide. So we would also integrate medical services, partner with our local hospitals and ambulance services to develop healthcare mobile response units. And they could also provide some medical intervention to homelessness, because as many know, a lot of the homeless are mentally ill or have addiction issues, and the medical services would really assist. A nurse and an EMT would be to respond, triage a low-level issue, and not have the police always respond. So the HOPE building, this is a city-owned building. It was formerly occupied by the Orange County Child Development Center. The city of Fullerton would host the HOPE site and coordinate funding for the building improvements. And we would actually create a JPA Board of Memorandum of Standing of all of our partner cities. The JPA or the MOU could employ or contract for a director or manager in the future, and the governance would coordinate regional resources and policies for a successful program. So the next steps, we are in the process working, the police department in the Northridge County Task Force are actually doing a proposal with a firm to see how this would occur over the next, you know, four or five months. So I am sorry for the disjointed, and we will get back to you, but I'm here, and hopefully the chief will be here to answer any questions.
Kelly, if you go under Participants and hover over my name, you should be able to have an option to give me back host privileges, so I can bring the chief into the discussion.
Right click on her. Right click.
Make host.
All right, I'm the host now. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, and yay.
Okay.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor, whenever it's appropriate.
We can do that now. Sure, go ahead.
Kelly, on the, on the whole building, is there any parking available there, or open space around it?
There is parking actually in front of the building and also to the side of the building. It is adjacent to the tennis center, so there is quite a lot of parking.
Because one of the things, if we open that up, could we make that our new safe parking location, since it's nowhere around any homes? It's in the middle of St. Jude, the YWCA, and so forth, given that we're going to have staff there already?
We would not recommend the safe parking be there, because it is a trail that is heavily used, the tennis center that has elementary schools that are coming to and for there. Also, we will be preparing a report, we're working with Pathways of Hope. The safe parking program actually did not, for the, it was not cost-effective for the number of people that were in the program, and the number of, in the funds that it took to run the program. We are looking at a regional approach for a safe parking program with more regional partners that would be maybe more cost-effective.
And so how's that study coming along? Where are we at with that? We're looking at that, safe parking?
Well, we've been working with Supervisor Chaffee, and we're waiting for the final report from Pathways of Hope from, you know, they ran it, Illumination Foundation ran it for the first three months, and Illumination, and then Pathways of Hope ran it for approximately five months. So we're trying to get one final report to give to this supervisor to look at funding.
Okay, all right, because just the concern I have is with our new, I guess, we may start enforcing overnight parking and so forth, and that could impact some of these homeless individuals who are parked on the street. That's all for now, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Jung.
Just a brief comment, Mr. Mayor. I serve on the Orange County Housing Finance Trust with Supervisor Chaffee. I did want to let our partners know that the notice of funding availability, the NOFA, is right now out, deadline is March 15th of this year, so I encourage our partners to please apply. There's funding available. With that said, I'd like to, I'll move to receive and file the items.
That's good news on the funding available. All right. We do have a motion to receive and file?
You know, I'm happy to second. One comment I would have, you know, when we discussed last, I think it was our last meeting, we discussed some of the CDBG funding that was going to be made available for this structure. And as part of that discussion, it was specifically indicated that there would not be any shelter, there would not be any beds, there would not be any other overnight, you know, stay capacity. And so I just, I just want to maintain and re-register the support for that, as that's what was originally outlined. I'm not in favor of any adjustments or amendments to that.
Mr. Dunlap, adjustments to what? Again, I, maybe I tuned out, just?
Well, you know, you had raised the point that potentially there could be overnight RV parking, and I just was voicing that I am not supportive of that, in that specifically during the last discussion, it was last meeting, talked about some of the CDBG funding that was going to that site, and that was specifically outlined, that there was not any kind of, you know, overnight, there were no beds, you know, there was no overnight, you know, parking and things like that. So again, that's important, I think, to voice at this point.
So you're just saying you would like to see no enforcement or enforce the no parking on the street? That's what I'm just trying to clarify here.
Yeah, no, so we're talking about two different things. So I do support the enforcement of the overnight parking ban. I do think we should, we should be doing that. I think, you know, I have supported that. I think it's important for us to get back to enforcement. As for this specific site, do not believe that that should be an overnight parking location.
Got it, okay, thank you. I was confused, okay.
Mayor, I'll also note for the record that you have no public comments or Zoom comments on this item.
Thank you for that. So we do have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Who has a second? Mayor Protem? Great, thank you.
So, so is, we're going to, just for clarification, the motion is to just receive and file?
Receive and file.
Okay, could we, can I, one more question regarding the NOFA. Kelly, are we eligible for that notice of funding that Mr. Jung mentioned? Have we applied in the past? Are we eligible, or how does that work with us?
If it's the NOFA that I have read recently, this is for the construction and the building of affordable units. This would not be for something like a safe parking program.
Right.
And so when we're ready, you know, to move forward with the project, or any of our nonprofits are ready to move forward, you know, that's where they would apply for the NOFA.
Okay, and so that would help open up the HOPE Center. Okay, I, right, thank you.
Appreciate that clarification. And if there's no further comment, roll call vote on this.
Councilmember Jung?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dunlap?
Aye.
Mayor Whitaker?
Aye.
Thank you. Passes unanimously.
We're at item number 11, which is the 2021 Safe and Same Fireworks Sales. And would that be city manager or city clerk in this case?
That will be the, that will be the city clerk, so Lucinda?
We drew straws, and I have to do this one, so. Thank you once again, Mayor and Council. I know we're celebrating Groundhog Day and six more weeks of winter, but it's also time to start thinking about the Fourth of July. You have the 2020 Annual Fireworks Report in your packet. It's also online with the Agenda Packet for the public who'd like to view it. 2020 was an interesting year, as COVID delayed the application deadlines and the lottery drawing, and we actually had to move the lottery drawing outside instead of doing it at a council member due to COVID. Also, interestingly, we draw 15 names of the applicants to get a fireworks stand, just a little insider scoop. They are stands, not booths. The industry is very sensitive about that, so now you know. We had the 15 drawn, and we always draw five alternates. This year, due to COVID issues, either not finding enough staff, or some of the groups just being concerned that they were a group that just didn't want to be out in the public and interacting, we actually had five of the original 15 drop out, and all five of the alternates moved up to the sales phase. So we did still have 15 stands, and we went through our entire roster of alternates this year. That's probably going to be an asterisk in our Fullerton fireworks history, but just some interesting there. Also, higher this year were the fireworks discharge complaints. Likely, that was a combination of people staying at home during COVID, as any of you are out on Fourth of July, I think there was some pent-up COVID aggression to get out on the Fourth of July for a lot of people. And also, combined with that, the Fourth of July fell on a Saturday this year. The community groups did make net profits a little bit higher this year than usual, between $6,600 and $39,750. Council approved the permit fees last year to recapture the cost for service for the permits and everything included with the fireworks sales. Those costs do include the application processing, the stand inspections, the six police officers, one dispatcher, and a fire suppression team that are, that are paid for out of the permits only on the Fourth of July. Tonight, City Council is asked to receive and file the annual report and approve the 2021, 2021 sales timeline. That timeline is the lottery applications that will be accepted between March 1st and 31st. The drawing, if COVID allows us this year, will happen at the April 20th City Council meeting. The permit applications would be due to the fire department on June 4th. The applications will be processed June 30th, and during that time, the fireworks stands will also stop, drop, start dropping around town. The sales would be July 1st through the 4th. Stockers removed on July 4th. Stockers are moved on July 5th, the stands are removed by July 13th, and the permities will submit their financial reports by September 1st. Staff doesn't have any changes to recommend to the application process this year. And with that, I can answer any questions, or you may wish to discuss or take public comment at this time.
Seeing nothing by the council right now, a public comment might be appropriate.
You're a step ahead of me when I get on that. Do you have any Zoom comments while I'm pulling that up?
There are no Zoom comments.
And we have no ecomments.
Wow, okay, we should move quickly on this then, council. Councilmember Jung.
That, with that direction, sir, I'd move to receive and file the item.
Mr. Mayor, just before, if I may, I know that many folks at the last Fourth of July were disturbed by fireworks and so on, and I know that the voters have reinstated or reaffirmed their need for, for continuing fireworks in our city. However, what I'd like to see is, is maybe prior to July 4th or is a presentation by our PD and our fire on, on what they intend to do as far as enforcement on illegal fireworks and maybe something that we can have our community at least be confident in the fact that we are going to be going after these illegal fireworks, which, that were really, a lot of them were the culprits of what, what happened this last time. So that's all, I'd like to see that happen.
We generally request that information to occur during a council meeting. Is that your intent?
Yes, that it presented to council so that the public can be aware of it. So maybe a presentation prior to July 4th, or at least ample time.
Yes, I think that's always a good suggestion, so we'll make sure that that gets agendized. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
And then I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further comment? Seeing none, we're ready for roll call.
Councilmember Jung?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dunlap?
Aye.
Mayor Whitaker?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you.
And we arrive at item number 12, the last on our agenda this evening other than what remains with closed session following this. This is a city board commission and committee structure. This is a request by Councilmember Jung, and, and I seconded the decision to consider changing the structure of some of the advisory boards and committees, commissions, which serve this city. I will turn it over to Councilmember Jung.
Mr. Mayor, council, citizen participation in local government's critical to telling truth to power. So in our city in particular, perhaps much of the mistrust is, is due to previously elected officials and the resulting culture that was created. I think that expanding the citizen commissions and committees will be another step in the right direction, as is going to a Zoom platform for these committee meetings as well. That said, I would like to see the expansion of two at-large appointments for the following committees or commissions. The Investment Advisory Committee, the Parks and Recreation Commission, the Transportation Circulation Commission, and the Active Transportation Committee. I'm also encouraging city staff to make every effort to hold consistent, regular meetings via Zoom so the public can actively participate and have a comprehensive agenda prepared accordingly. Thank you, sir.
Is that a motion?
Certainly will make it, sir.
Okay, I would second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, and we have time for comments, certainly.
I would like to ask a question. In expanding this, I have obviously no, no, no problem in, in expanding participation by the public, and I certainly have been always encouraging that. But one of the issues that I've, I've seen is that some of these committees haven't met. And so I'd like, I'd like us to actually give them something to do. I know the most active one was the, obviously the Planning Commission and the infrastructure, but I don't believe the Active Transportation Committee even met once, maybe, maybe once in the last couple of years.
I could affirm that for you. One of the things that, when we were doing these at-large committee, commission interviews, one of the directors on a sitting commission already informed the mayor and I that there wasn't a quorum for them to meet, so they just didn't meet. So perhaps having more folks participate in our community, we can reach that quorum and these meetings can be held regularly. On top of that, I would suggest very highly that the staff make a more conscious effort.
Yeah. Mr. Jung, though, if, if, if the quorum wasn't being met with five members, how is it going to be met with seven?
I am using just simple faith in folks, that with more, that there'll be peer pressure to meet, sir.
If I could add, because I know as a planning commissioner myself, it was not uncommon to have, you know, a meeting that would not, you know, that we'd just get a note, hey, there's no meeting. And you say, well, wait a minute, we've got things that we wanted to discuss, and then we'd have to kind of push uphill almost against staff instead of having staff work with and support us. And so, you know, maybe in addition to adding these positions, you know, we could get a more collaborative or demand a more collaborative effort from department heads that are acting as the liaisons with some of these committees. You know, because I think, I think a lot of times it's, you know, really, if we, if, you know, if we want to empower community volunteers and community participation, then we have to do that. You know, we can't, can't just have these, you know, commissions that don't meet and don't get together. We need to trust that the committee chair, the vice chair, the leadership of these committees are not only in communication with, you know, the city staff person who is, you know, sort of the point person, but that they are then kind of setting the tone and trying to drive these, you know, committees in order to improve the community. I think that's absolutely important as well. So I don't know if that requires more of a, you know, revision of a city ordinance that determines or outlines how, you know, meetings are scheduled and not scheduled. But, you know, Mr. City Manager, I would ask that you instruct, you know, all department heads that are working with these bodies, you know, to work in conjunction with committee leadership.
I think, if I can answer that, I know over the last year it's been challenging on, on many fronts. I think now that we've switched to Zoom, that should help with a lot of things, especially the public access. A lot of our committees, commissions are dependent upon the item before them. So if there is no item, they're not policy committees, they're not there to kind of sit there and, you know, come up with stuff. So on the Planning Commission, a lot of times if there's no applications for whatever reason, right now, the schedule that we have on the Planning Commission is every two weeks they're meeting because that goes with a time flow of making sure that we're getting material through and applications processed rapidly and all that stuff. I know that the Active Transportation Commission, you know, that used to be the Bicycle Users Subcommittee. So it was a subcommittee, and then trying to get more things to it. There's still some conflict with the Transportation and Circulation Commission. So we do need to look at all of our commissions and committees and kind of scrub them for what they are. And that just comes back to, you know, staff having time to do it and all that stuff. So I can talk to my department heads, making sure we have had discussions about making sure that people who are on the commissions are interacted with, that there's more going on. I know that we're going to be with the Parks and Rec Commission. I think it's a good item. We have a lot coming forward in Parks and Rec soon with the Parks Master Plan coming forward. That's going to be an incredible process with a lot of participation, community participation, surveying going on, a lot of back and forth with the commissioners. So it does ebb and flow. Do we, do we need to do a better job? Absolutely. So we'll take a look at that.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I made, I wanted to, there's one more point I wanted to make is, is I actually wanted to know two things, actually. In our discussion in the library, one of the things that we, on the museum, sorry, one of the things that we were, we've been missing is a committee or a commission on the cultural arts. And I think that is important to have, that would help coordinate all the arts programming in our city, work with all the arts entities in our city with the private or public, initiate programming for, through our city. And I'd love us to see a, an arts, a cultural arts and heritage committee formed as part of that. I know we were working on, I know Councilmember Silva was passionate about a youth commission. I think that's in the work. I'd love us to see, I'd love us to maybe include in that motion the, an arts commission formation. As for the Investment Advisory Committee, I think it's a very specific position. I'd like us to expand that, if we are to expand the, the, the number of people on it, the number of commissioners, that I'd, I'd like to expand its role to include also overall finance and pension oversight to review. That way, it gives it a little bit more meat, if you will, and more function. But, so that's my, so, you know, I'm a little hesitant on the Active Transportation only because it really didn't have anything to do. But, but I'm open to increasing this, if, if you, if you're open to adding this one commission and expanding the role of the, the Investment Advisory Committee.
You know, I personally couldn't support expanding the Investment Advisory only because I think that the important work you're talking, you're discussing should be subject of a, of a separate, separate committee, I think. Yeah, I absolutely think that, you know, financial oversight, you know, or budget oversight is, you know, I think is a committee that's, you know, operates in many cities, is a, it's kind of a standalone committee. So I would be willing to support it as a standalone. So, okay.
Just for clarification, Mr. Jung, you wanted two more to the Active Transportation, right?
That's correct.
And then two more to the Parks and Rec, and two more to the Transportation and Commission?
Transportation and Circulation.
Circulation.
Also two more to the Investment.
Investment, okay, got it, all right. And then also for, for the manager, can we, the city manager, can we look to see how many of the meetings that we had this past year or maybe prior to COVID were canceled because there wasn't a quorum or canceled because there wasn't any items? Just to get a feel for that, I mean, you know, with the Active Transportation, if there is no items, we put someone on there and there's not a whole lot to do, right? But if it's because we're not getting the quorum, then I think Zoom would definitely help us get the quorum. So can we do that? Can we come back with a report or ask your department heads? When they were canceled, is it quorum or is it no items?
Yes, we'll do that in a separate memo to council. We'll get staff to work with the department heads on that, so.
And without firm numbers, I do believe in most cases that it's been that there hasn't been any, anything to conduct the meeting for, that there's been a lack of topics.
Mayor?
Yes.
I will note that to change the number of members on committees will require an ordinance change. So if you would like to make that motion to direct staff to prepare the necessary documents, and also, if you, if it's okay, the staff will come back with a proposal for the terms and when you would like to appoint these members. Let me rephrase that, it's getting late, I can't get my thoughts clear. Would you like these new appointments to be included with the election year recruitment? And do a giant recruitment, which it would be as of this year, because you have the three new council members coming in, or would you like to stagger those with your odd number recruitment?
Yeah, a number of important questions, and what I was going to do was ask a city manager to weigh in a little bit on a couple of the items that have been suggested, including expansion of the Investment Committee and/or creation of the, of the other committee which has been suggested. I, I know that it is a fairly narrow scope on the Investment Committee. And so just what's your reaction to those proposals?
So the Investment Advisory Committee has the mayor, the city manager, the finance director, and then the three public members. So I'm assuming that within the community of our size that we can get two additional members.
Good.
You know, we haven't struggled with quorum just because Ellis and I make up part of that quorum and we're here during the times. The meetings are generally at four o'clock, they go till 5:30, heavy on the investment. Fascinating on the, you know, the market update and all that stuff for the nation where it's going. So I'm confident that we can get two people interested in that, so. The other issue on the ordinance, I know some of our commissions committees are created by ordinance, others are by resolution. So what I'd like to be able to do is look at these and maybe move some of them to creation by resolution because it's, we can do it easily, more easily. And I don't think there's really a need for them to be in ordinance. So, but we can bring that back, we'll look at that and see what it needs. And then on the creation, what I'd, of the Cultural Arts and/or Pension and Finance Committee, what I'd like to be able to do is research some of those committees and bring information back to the City Council to look at the scope, to look at some of the parameters of it. Interesting enough, and going back in some of our online document archives, at one time we had a Cultural Arts Committee. We also had a youth commission back in the 70s, and then those were kind of merged into a Community Services Commission, which is now the Parks and Rec Commission. On the, Mayor Protem, on the youth commission, so we're going to be promoting that in March and April to all the schools, and then starting to receive applications in May, and it will be for the next school year. This was all pushed back because of COVID. So we had planned to launch it a lot earlier, but because of COVID, there was just no, no reason to do it, so.
So, oh, sure, Councilmember Jung.
So if I can ask the, Mr. City Manager to, to figure out an ordinance or a resolution for the two additional members of the Investment Advisory Committee that you're confident that we can gather in the community. I think we have more than enough applicants that we already have that are willing to serve that the mayor and I interviewed. I would say the same for Parks and Recreations. I think there's a long line of folks that would like to donate their time accordingly. If you would like to do some more research in terms of quorum for traffic and circulation and the Bicycle Users Committee or what it used to be, I'd certainly be, welcome the data on that as well. But if I could move with the two committees that I think we have significant access to.
Mr. Jung, if I may, would it be more efficient for our staff if they would come back with some research first on this? Because if, if we're going to do an ordinance, that's a, that's a, it's a big sort of lift. So maybe, because we may want to expand the Active Transportation or we may want to do some other things. So if I may suggest that we, they bring back maybe another item with more in-depth and, and information, that then we can make those move forward with a.
Councilman O'Malley, do you have a deadline that you'd like to provide staff so they can get this research done?
Yeah, I mean, we can ask them to come back maybe in a, in a month or, if that's.
Councilman, would you, would you support perhaps an ordinance for the positions that were outlined in maybe a report? I mean, could we do this in such a way that we get the ordinance perhaps at the next meeting so that we can review some of the candidates that have previously been considered and then separately explore, you know, what, what some new committees or commissions might, might look like? So that it's like split in two, we get one that we can act on next.
Because then we're going to have to bring the ordinance again and revise it, revise it one more time.
We are going to have to bring an ordinance back because the current ordinance basically states that, you know, the limited numbers, and this was when we, two years ago, changed it. So we'll have to bring an ordinance revision back. But what we'll do is look at it, work with the city attorney's office so that we can set it by resolution, be much more flexible, and that way we can try to get as many things done as quick as possible.
We can do all that in a timely manner. Just so you're familiar, an ordinance is a first reading, a second reading, and then 30 days later it becomes active. That's just your information.
Resolution would be more nimble, certainly, as we go.
And then just one more thing, you mentioned that the Cultural Arts Commission and youth were kind of rolled into Parks and Rec.
were kind of rolled into Parks and Rec. I'd like to see if we can do the cultural and arts one, put it in Parks and Rec, since we already have that there. Because I know the Parks and Rec, we would get those notices that meeting was canceled. And so that would give them more items to look at. So maybe, you know, when we're looking at this, maybe have the option of looking at a standalone Cultural and Arts Fair Committee, and maybe bring it into the Parks. Just to see which one would fit better.
And what we can do is, that could be part of the research, because at that point, what I would also recommend is that you have a dedicated seat to somebody from the Mukenthal, or somebody from the Fullerton Museum Center, and then maybe a couple additional at-large, maybe somebody from the college or something like that. But we can bring back some more research on that to see how other cities do it, and what was the best fit.
Okay, thank you.
And again, that would be brought back when?
What is today? Groundhog Day. It'd have to be the first March. It'd be too quick turnaround for February 16th.
Is that satisfactory with everyone here?
Yeah.
Okay.
In case I forgot to say it, you have no public comments on this item.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That brings...
You do have one Zoom comment, if I may. Sorry.
Sure.
Jane Riefer?
Am I able to be heard?
Yes.
Yes.
Hello. Oh, great, great. Thank you. Sometimes three squares come up, and you don't know which one to, like duplicates, and you don't know which one to hit. Okay, well, hello again. And I just wanted to comment just a bit on the items about the committees not having quorum, or not having items, and so then they're not held. I've heard frustration from people who sit on certain committees, saying there's all kinds of things that they would like to talk about, but the meetings have been canceled. I could say that might be the case in Parks and Rec, and also in Active Transportation, where they, particularly in Active Transportation, where they have a slew of projects that they're interested in. And, but the meetings are constantly canceled. And so I think that, also with the items I had mentioned earlier on today, that things are not going through Parks and Rec before they come to city council, or they're not going to planning, particularly on landmark items. A lot of, Hunt Branch Library never went to, never went to planning, sitting as the Landmarks Commission, for example. And so, gosh, I can't say it never went, but on some of the issues we've been talking about, it hasn't gone. And so I think there actually are things for the committees and commissions to discuss. And it's just somewhat ironic to hear that we're having problems with items going through the proper processes, but then we're not calling meetings. So I just wanted to put that out there. Also, we mentioned about having Zoom and how great it is for city council meetings. Could we get an ETA on when they'll be available for very important committees like planning and Parks and Rec? Because we're still limited to our 500 characters, and it just doesn't, it just doesn't cover some of the delicate and complex issues on occasion. Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I could ask Anissa Levas to provide us an update on the Zoom transition for all commissions, committees?
Sure. So we just secured the licenses for the rest of the commission and committee meetings today. We have to integrate some security features with our IT department. But next week, we should have all of the licenses for committees and commissions.
Good news.
And also on that, Mr. Mayor, if I can, we've also secured licenses so that each one of you can have Zoom community meetings. So we're going to provide you with a Zoom account.
Excellent. That would be most advantageous. With that, we've completed our agenda. However, there is one additional item that we'd like to address.
Thank you.
Okay. We did have a motion and a second, right, on the floor? Motion by...
It was motion by Councilmember Jung.
Councilmember Jung?
Yeah.
Seconded by Dunlap, okay.
And is this still back to your original four committees that you'd like to expand?
That's correct.
For the direction provided to staff?
That's correct as well.
How's that sound? Okay.
And with that, a roll call vote?
Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Whit, uh, not Councilmember, Mayor Whitaker. I almost talked through the whole meeting. Five-oh.
And that completes the regular agenda. We will be going back to complete our closed session agenda. But there is one item to address first. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor Whitaker. We are adjourning this evening in memory of a beloved Fullertonian and the father of former mayor Greg Seaborn. So I'm going to read a little in memoriam here, and ask that we close with a moment of silence. Thomas Tommy Seaborn passed away peacefully with his daughter Lisa by his side on January 15th, 2021. He was born in 1937, Winslow, Arkansas, the son of Eddie and Kerry Seaborn. His family ventured to California in 1940, residing between the cities of Fullerton and Brea during his childhood. Tom attended Fullerton College, followed by Cal State Long Beach, where he discovered his passion for languages and cultures, which he cultivated throughout the rest of his life. During this time, he also met his bride-to-be, Arlene Beeson Seaborn, while working at the iconic Fullerton Hillside Drive-In. They were married in 1958 at St. Mary's Church, and in the early 1970s, they joined St. Juliana's Parish, where he stayed very involved with the church and school community. Tom was well-known in the community by those who enjoyed restaurant dining. He worked at Carl Carter's originally, original family restaurant, followed by Far West Services and WR Grace, where he managed and traveled around the country, opening snack shops, CoCo's, and Reuben's Restaurants. Of course, all of this experience naturally gravitated him to opening two of his local, own local restaurants, Peasant Fair in 1978 and Izzy's Cafe in 1980. Before leaving the industry, he found himself on one last endeavor with the Knott's Berry Farm family, where he stayed until he retired. He spent his retirement between Fullerton and Trinidad, California. Tom was preceded in death by his wife, Arlene, his parents, brothers Don and Ronnie, and son-in-law Steve Boyagian. He survived by his children, Lisa Boyagian, Thomas Seaborn Jr., Laura and Mark Turpinin, Angela and Peter Gambino, and former Fullerton mayor Gregory and Stacy Seaborn. He has seven grandchildren and two great-grandchildren. Tom will always be remembered for teaching his family and friends the importance of caring for the community, his quirky sense of humor, his love of people, his kind heart, and his devotion to his family. With that, I'd ask for a moment of silence, as we recognize the memory of Thomas Seaborn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. And with that, we will recess to our closed session for completion.